Good evening. It is 5:30 on September 4, 2024. I am calling this Special City Council Budget Workshop to order the City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene recess, realign the regular session or other called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We have for item two, we have citizen comments. Madam City Secretary, I've noticed from your nod that we have no citizen comments. Thank you very much. We will move on to item number three A, receive an update regarding the existing capital improvement projects planned. Madam City Manager.
This is actually our assistant city manager's. But it'd be nice for me to know.
Let's everybody get to see how the sausage is made, right?
Of course it's gonna cut your left side right now. Of course it is. What's it done this time?
Browser? One drive? That's all that's on there.
Not, not the combined?
The fonts are messed up. All right, yep, so we're going to talk about our CIP projects. I'm going to give a quick overview. The city manager will have to help me click through. We'll go to the next one. So this is our maps of all the CIP projects. I can print this out, so you see all of them. Those are all the locations for each of the map associated with each of the projects we're going to talk about tonight. There's only two of them that aren't on there, and the reason they're not on there is their studies, and so it'll just cover the whole city or whole systems. I'll talk about those individually. So we'll talk first about Simsboro Water Treatment Plant, the well-filled and transmission facilities. It's currently about 81% complete. We've got use of 73% of the budget. We did a notice to proceed on September of 2022 with an 875-day project. So far, we're on schedule. Substantial completion will be December of 2024, 845 days, and then final completion will be January of 2025, 875 days, which is the completion date. So on schedule and within budget.
This is the project that they did amend the budget.
They did, yes. But as it's, as the amended budget is currently within that budget. Any questions?
Yeah, so we, is this one? Yeah. So it's September, October, November, December. So we're going to be pulling water out of this in three months and put it into our water lines?
Correct.
We're pulling water now.
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead.
We, we did a, it was brought two wells online so that we could keep up with summer flow. Luckily, we've got a lot of rain, our flow's not as much, but we still have it on. So we're at capacity of receiving 4 million gallons a day from there now. So, you know, when our peak flow is 3, 3 million, 3.2, we pump in 4 million, well, not pumping gravity exactly, and then we still want to burn two more wells on. Right now, it's not going through the filters. It will go through sand filters or polishing, so our water's going to be some of the best in the area.
And when do we stop getting water out of the alluvial wells?
Once we get this completed, then we will go through a transition state where we shut them off, and we'll, we'll still work it through with TCQ, but probably 45 days after that, we will then decommission the alluvial wells.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Don't go too far. You might as well push that one out. All right, ma'am, we want to go to the next one. Waste Water Treatment Plant Number Three, Phase One, we're at 96% completion. We're working on a budget reconciliation at this time right now. We've got some change orders we've got to bring forward. We're working to get through all that paperwork. Substantial completion was declared in July, I believe it was like July 2 of 2024. Final completion, we're gearing for the, hopefully, the middle of September. We've got some funnel, final punch list items that we're working on with BAR. We had a meeting with BAR on this past Tuesday after we did the termination with KSA, and so BAR is onboard and is working to complete these items. We're working on the redesign work of Outfall. They're supposed to start next week, Curtis? They start early? Oh, yeah, one, one additional week. The work on the Outfall, the original design of the Outfall, we had some structural issues where it collapsed on itself, and so they've came in with a different design. They're going to come in and refill, pack in, and change, do the work of what the redesign is. We're going to schedule a rubbing cutting, so we'll be reaching out, get that done as soon as we're ready to go for the September of 2024.
The plant is already taking?
Yes. We're taking flows. I think Curtis estimated about 500,000 a day?
That's correct.
So, any other question?
And our first two shards was the day later, May 8.
May 8.
So, a couple things for council to remember. One, we relieved the engineer of duty, KSA. Two, we are pending final settlement of whatever that final bill is, which we're not sure yet. The attorneys are working through that. Some of the final punch list items are minor, as on there stated, the two big ones are the HVAC and the Outfall. The Outfall is working through itself. We've engaged a new MEP engineer who is on our IDIQ list to help us figure out the HVAC unit, because that's what's keeping staff from being able to move into the building, so.
Yep. All right, going to the next one. Going to Transfer Lift Station in Forest Main. 100% design is complete. We received that on August 19th. The opinion of probable construction cost was 6,711,000. Finalizing the final land acquisition, I think we've got one more piece that we're working on, and that will complete all the land acquisition for this project. But currently, this, we put it on hold pending the outcome of Waste Water Treatment Plant Number One and Number Two rehabilitation. So this project is currently on hold with the design. We have the design, it's just going to put it on the shelf so we can bring this design back out if, at a later time.
Why is it on hold?
The, if we were to transfer all of the flows to this, from this plant all the way to the new plant with this, we'd be at almost capacity at the new plant. And so when this project was thought out, a couple of things. One, the opinion of probable cost was a whole heck of a lot less than that. We have ARPA funds of 2 million or so, and the thought was that ARPA funds were going to pay for this. Obviously, the cost is three times as high, and two, it's not reasonable to send the flows to the new plant. There had been discussion that Plant One and Two were not rehabilitable, if that's even a word. Were not able to be rehabilitated. But we are working through some engineering, working through wastewater specialists, working with our, with Curtis, and determining how to keep those online with rehabilitation, and hopefully just using the ARPA money that's there to be able to rehabilitate those. Might need some additional funds, but hopefully nowhere near the 6.7 million. So that's why it's on hold pending the rehabilitation of the existing plant.
So would you not need to do this then? If?
This is a good project to have as a redundant method, so it's always good. Just like water, we should be able to shut off a valve and be able to send water down a different pipe. If something happened to one of the plants, we should be able to shift flows and send it to a different plant. The problem is our existing plant will be at capacity, and everything that we're expecting to come online on the west side of town would not be able to come online. So from the get-go, we were behind the eight ball.
No, I, I mean, everything you're telling me leads me to believe we're going to put this on the shelf and never take it off.
It's possible.
It's possible.
Okay.
It's possible.
And I'm, I don't, not saying I object to that, I'm just trying to understand if this was a temporary pause or if this is?
It hurts me because we spend a lot on land acquisition.
Yeah.
Hurts me just a little bit.
So, so when we do the rehab on one and two, I guess we'll just do them one at a time and we'll take half the flows?
Yeah, so there's, there's an existing, yeah, as I say, there's an existing line that's in the ground currently that's going from central lift station to the current plants, one and two. The idea is that we reverse that flow, and it will go backwards to central lift station, which will then go to the, the new treatment plant, yeah, the new plant, while we rehab. So we'll take one off, transition those flows, rehab that one, bring that one back online, do the same with the other one, reroute those flows through existing pipes without having to do any of the, the new force main. And then, once we get that done, then we can decide what our future looks like. Hopefully by then, we're going to do this study that we're going to talk about. Anything else, Curtis? West Side Collection System Phase One and Two, both Phase One and Two are completed. We've completed final inspections. We're waiting for, I think, Phase Two's final closeout documents, and both of those will be done and over with. These were the west side rerouting Hunter's Crossing, rerouting seat and lift stations to the new plant, and those have been completed. Any questions?
All right, I don't know if this is on. Okay. So on this one, on the, am I on?
Yes.
The August, the memo that was sent on August 23rd, it said, it, it said, under project description, it says the project to allow, it says something about plant construction is not complete, allow plant construction. Oh, here it is. Gravity the flow to the currently in construction wastewater treatment plant number three. Was that just written wrong?
Yeah, that was the original title for the project.
That's because that's done, right?
Yeah, that, yes.
Phase one?
Correct. Yeah, when Phase One, when Phase One came online in May, they completed these, Phase Two and Phase One of this were completed because of, they were able to route those flows.
So the writing's just wrong?
Yes, correct.
On the memo?
On the memo.
And then they'd also mentioned a final payment. A final payment to who?
SJ Lewis.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Waste Water Treatment Plant Number Three, Phase Two. So we conducted the preliminary study with Freezer Nichols, was in early of 2024. We had previous contract with Freezer Nichols for 371. We need to update that study, it's already out of date. We need to update it, and we met with Freezer Nichols today for some of the IDIQ, and they, they brought this up, and we're going to set a meeting with city manager, and we'll kind of work through this and revisit that study. But also, we, as a part of the completion of the Phase One, we need to reengage the study for the TCQ requirements for the, for the Phase Two portion. So we will be bringing this cost up back to you.
So the issue with this particular project is, one, we're operating with outdated master plans, and so often the consultants, and even our impact fee study folks are going, oh, you don't have that kind of growth happening. Well, we do. They're not sitting in our chair every single week, and so some of the assumptions that are being made would put us at capacity, which is exactly what happened with the existing plant. Some of the assumptions that were made were very low-balled. Add to that, the type of development that is coming is smaller lot sizes, which means greater densities, which means greater LUEs, which means a greater need for a larger wastewater treatment plant. So just like everything else in Bastrop, we're having to operate in tandem, and that makes it very, very difficult. It means everybody's got to be rowing in the same direction at the same speed, and that is not, that's not what happens. So the study is already out of date, and I would venture to say the LUE calculation that we used in the beginning is already out of date, too. So, you know, do we need a 4 million? Do we need a 6 million? Some of the conversation is, well, if you build it too big, it's just as bad as if you build it not big enough. Well, I don't think we'll ever not build it too big, because we still have core X flows that we could potentially take on and other flows to potentially take on that would not only help us pay, but not leave the asset quote-unquote stranded, which is what today's discussion was about.
So I have some questions on this, because the last, in our last workshop, I asked if any studies had been done, and the answer was no. Then none had been done, and that's why we needed to get one done for 371. And then the memo that you sent on the 23rd, it mentioned that Freezer Nichols had previously done the study, but did, so did we pay Freezer Nichols $371,000?
So Freezer Nichols has been engaged, that's what Freezer Nichols, that's the price Freezer Nichols gave us to do the study, and they've not done the study.
And we didn't pay them?
No.
We have, so we have, because I was like, now we're paying $700,000, so we have not paid Freezer Nichols.
No, we have not paid Freezer Nichols.
And they didn't do the study at all?
No, but we are rapidly approaching a place where they?
My question is, why I was questioning it, because I crossed, I pulled up the resolution that the previous council approved that amount for Freezer Nichols, but then I also looked on ClearGov, and on ClearGov, it says that it was completed. It says wastewater treatment plant number three, Phase Two. The project consisted of design and construction, first phase of the project, do an engineering study. The final deliverable will be included in a preliminary design report, and then it said project status, preliminary study has been completed, and final memo has been provided to the city for review, and that the city was negotiating professional services contract with the engineer for design, and then in the, in 2024, January, it says the preliminary study was completed.
That may be Phase One, but we don't have anything for Phase Two.
It says Phase Two.
Yeah.
Right there. So that's why I was confused, because based on this, it says first, fourth quarter, first quarter fiscal year 24, we paid them, or it was, it didn't say we paid them, but it says it was completed.
No.
And so the information online is wrong?
It probably is. So the difficult part about what, what we're reconciling is, the CIP projects are project plans that may not ever come to fruition, for whatever reason. The council may change its mind, we may not have enough money, we identified another priority. I'm not sure how they're listed in ClearGov, which is why I had this executive summary sent to y'all, and the executive summary says Freezer Nichols to perform the study. So if ClearGov is outdated, I apologize, we need to update that.
Okay. There's a map in here.
So there was an engagement that was expected with Freezer Nichols for 371,000, but that project, we put it on hold for a couple of different reasons. One, there's only $500,000 worth, I mean, 500,000 gallons worth of flows coming to the plant. Two, the rehabilitation of the existing plants. And three, the information that was included in that study was a lot less than we were going to actually need. It didn't include any of the Elon Musk, anything north of 969, and some of the other stuff that's coming online.
Do you see where I'm reading, Andres? Is that where you're looking? It's in the, if you go to the website and then go to engineering, and then click on that particular project, it's in there for quarterly updates as completed, and that we should be in the design phase, and that was fiscal year 24. But then earlier, you said that the, the study that was done was outdated.
Well, that was, so we have to do a big wastewater master plan study. That study's already outdated. It's done. It's, that's a different, that's a different study. I'm going to bring up the memo.
Well, I mean, I read your memo, but what's online for public consumption says that it was completed, so I was confused.
Nope, not completed.
This is why I can't wait till Jimmy comes back tomorrow.
Yeah.
Jimmy, we're going to go through these CIP projects with Jimmy. Jimmy has a really good handle on our CIP projects. She's been out on attorney leave.
Who updated the ClearGov? Jimmy put that note in ClearGov that it was completed?
She may have, yes. There were, there were two people that were doing that, Alicia and Jimmy, and, and then Finance also did the financial pieces. And so, yeah, so Jimmy's been out, so we can, actually Jimmy comes back tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. But I did find what you're talking about. Yeah, I, I will get clarification and, on that, and then, but the memo is, is accurate.
That's a memo that was sent out in August 22nd.
Yeah.
So when I tell you master plans, and I tell you plans are out of date, there's several, so you can consider it a master plan, and then you can consider it small area development plans. The wastewater treatment plant is the plan to expand either to 4 million or 6 million additional.
Yeah, I mean, that's all noted on, online. What you're saying there, it just says that it was completed.
And I'll verify the phases. They may have the phases mixed up.
Yeah. That's all I have on, on this.
So I'll do a follow-up to you.
Okay, thank you.
We've spent about $15,000 with Corolo on wastewater treatment plant number two, but that's the only expenses related to that that I see.
For Phase Two.
For Phase Two.
Okay, thank you.
Agnes Street Extension, we gave a quick briefing at council. This is exciting, we're in the bid phase for this one. Bids are due September 19th. Contract will go out October 1, and then hopefully following up with a notice to proceed the following week. The opinion of probable construction cost is 5,275, and we'll confirm that once we get the bids. Hopefully 12 months to get it, get it completed.
And this is a grant of?
Grant, the grant is 3.2, 3.1, I think roughly, 3.1. If I'm not, or no, this is the 2.3, 2.3 million. Blakey is 3.2.
So a portion of this is a grant?
Yeah, a portion of this is grant, a portion is from EDC, and then the rest is city. And then there is some small dollars from the Grove from settlement agreement. Any questions on Agnes?
Hurry.
Hurry.
I don't have a question, but.
I just wanted, I'm on?
Yes.
This is before Sylvia back, probably was, I was on planning zoning, and I remember when they would put in for Agnes Street grants, and they would never, never get them, so thank goodness that we've gotten some grants.
Not me, prior administration.
Not you.
Going to, I think, Financial Ways next, or Blakey, sorry, Blakey. Blakey is currently at 90% designs. We will have the 100% design due the middle of September. Opinion of probable cost right now is 10,301,398. The majority of that is some water and wastewater infrastructure, as well as the roadway, but a lot of that is, we're running the 36-inch wastewater line in conjunction with this. It is a GLO, so currently the grant is submitted, it was submitted by May 31st. We're not able to touch anything until we get this grant, through this grant period. They told us nine months to 18 months, so hopefully we get an answer and we can get moving.
So we can't do anything, like, including land acquisition and things like?
Nope. Can't touch anything till after, and this one's going to have a?
So the potential for this particular area is the council approved the transportation impact fee. You could do a revenue bond. There is plenty of improvements that are supposed to go on in that area, and we were just doing some rough calcs today, and this is why it's important the council not waive impact fees for transportation. But if a Walmart, or to go in there, or a Target, or something similar like that, the impact fee is about 1.3 million dollars in, in the 2025 dollars, and it continues to go higher. So if the city chose not to wait, there are revenue bonds that we could do to do that ourselves.
Yeah. So once we get the design, the 100% design in September, we could?
There's land acquisition that's going to be required from that.
Right, and not likely to be simple. So, I mean, what is the, what, I guess, we, I would need to understand the likelihood of getting the GLO grants and the dollar amount that those would likely be to make a decision about. Yeah, because I mean, we need to do it, we need to do it sooner, but, you know, if that means we give up $10 million of free money, then I wouldn't want to do that. But if it means we're giving up $1 million of the free money and, you know, doing it three years faster or two years faster, then now we're talking, so.
Laura, do you recall the date the grant was submitted?
It is, I believe, 15 years ago.
Yeah.
And it was submitted in May.
It was submitted in May, but Laura, what is the, Laura, what is the, the grant is already ours, right? It's?
It is a GLO.
MIT mod, right?
MIT mod. So the grant is ours, it's just, we have to go through these environmental studies, we have to go through all the?
It's a GLO MIT mod coming through.
Hang on, Laura.
It's a GLO MIT mod grant being distributed through CapCog. The application has been submitted, it's just going through the GLO process. It's either 2.2 or 2.68 million.
So 20% of the cost.
And it's almost guaranteed that we get it? Guaranteed that we get it? I mean, 100?
It is.
Yeah.
CapCog has already received the funds, they just have to go through the MIT mod distribution process, which is the GLO application. Unfortunately, it is a very slow process, because not only do you have to have your application approved, you have to go through environmental clearance, too, before you're cleared to spend anything.
Okay, then can we find out what those environmental clearances are, and what they cost? I mean, if that's going to chew up a decent part of the, the grant, then it makes the grant less valuable, so, and of course, the time element is pretty important, I think.
Yes, so we can bring that back to you, and then you can tell us which way you want to go, if you want to go around the grant, or if we want to continue to wait.
Does, like, is this extension going to Jessica?
No, it will come across. It is that extension, it won't cut across Jessica, it'll turn down.
And go back to 71.
And go back to Old Las Vegas.
Yes.
You'll see that at the 10, 9:24 council meeting, and the recommendation from Planning Commission to amend the transportation master plan.
All right, next one, ma'am.
Hold on, Agnes is 4.2.
Agnes is 4.2 grant, yeah. They're all, we have a ton of grants between the other these, it's hard to mix them up. Financial Ways, next, I believe, now. That project is completed and closed out. Fairview Cemetery Expansion, we talked last council about this as well. In-house improvements, grading, road extension, and water line extensions still in progress. Base contract will provide 288 units, but we're looking for a policy that we'll have to get established. City Manager, do you want to talk about that one?
So the Fairview Cemetery Expansion is a loan from the General Fund to the Cemetery Board, and at one point, it was close to a million dollars. We've been able to bring that down by bringing a lot of the work in-house. We've been talking to the Cemetery Board Chair about their cost. So at the columbarium cost, 682 burial plots and 288 units, if the columbariums are priced at $1,500, which is, I hate to say the going rate, because I don't want to say that with funerals, the project will pay for itself, and then the 682.
It's a GLO MITMOD coming through.
Hang on, Laura.
It's a GLO MITMOD grant being distributed through CapCog. The application has been submitted. It's just going through the GLO process. It's either 2.2 or 2.68 million.
So 20% of the cost.
And it's almost guaranteed that we get it? Guaranteed that we get it? I mean, 100...
It is.
Yeah.
CapCog has already received the funds. They just have to go through the MITMOD distribution process, which is the GLO application. Unfortunately, it is a very slow process because not only do you have to have your application approved, you have to go through environmental clearance too before you're cleared to spend anything.
Okay, then, can we find out what those environmental clearances are and what they cost? I mean, if that's gonna chew up a decent part of the grant, then it makes the grant less valuable. So, and of course, the time element is pretty important, I think.
Yes, so we can bring that back to you, and then you can tell us which way you wanna go, if you wanna go around the grant, or if we wanna continue to wait.
Does, like, is this extension going to Jessica?
No, it will come across. It is that extension. It won't cut across Jessica. It'll turn down.
And go back to 71.
And go back to Old Lasen Highway.
Yes.
You'll see that at the 9/24 council meeting and the recommendation from Planning Commission to amend the transportation master plan.
All right, next one, ma'am.
Hold on, Agnes is 4.2.
Agnes is 4.2 grant, yeah. They're all, we have a ton of grants between the other these. It's hard to mix them up. Financial Ways, next, I believe, now. That project is completed and closed out. Fairview Cemetery expansion, we talked last council about this as well. In-house improvements, grading, road extension, and water line extensions still in progress. Base contract will provide 288 units, but we're looking for a policy that we'll have to get established. City manager, do you wanna talk about that one?
So the Fairview Cemetery expansion is a loan from the General Fund to the Cemetery Board. And at one point, it was close to a million dollars. We've been able to bring that down by bringing a lot of the work in-house. We've been talking to the Cemetery Board Chair about their cost. So at the columbarium cost, 682 burial plots and 288 units, if the columbariums are priced at $1,500, which is, I hate to say the going rate 'cause I don't wanna say that with funerals, the project will pay for itself. And then the 682 is addition to the cemetery, the cemetery fund. So it's a, it's a healthy investment, but at the same time, we need to work with the board to make sure that the costs that they are wanting to assess for each of these items can pay the debt back.
So in the budget, it says it's $850,000 for this.
That was at one point the opinion of probable cost. We've managed to shave a lot of that off because we brought a lot of the work in-house.
So then, it says that that's gonna be in the budget for '24, '25, but then in the back, it says '26 through '28, the same amount. Is that just because we don't know if we're gonna complete the work this next year?
No, it's just a carryover. What we do is just carry over those numbers so the project has a real start and finish date. We need to update that number, and it's not an item that's in the budget. We'll bring back a one-time borrow from reserves into the Cemetery Fund.
Okay, thanks.
Next is Old Iron Bridge Rehabilitation. Talked about this one as well. Goal is to reopen the bridge as pedestrian design. We're 90%. Bid phase is estimated to commence November 2024, and construction will be 16 months. Hopefully be completed by December of 2026. Any questions about this one? Do you have a question?
No. I know, it's just exciting.
Next is street maintenance. So this year, we completed HA5 project that is closed out. It was not on time, but that was due to rain delays. But we did complete it within budget. The HA5 FY25, it's gonna be 30-plus miles, and it's pending its final. We're got the maps preparing, and we're working on its final street. Which streets are gonna get it, the HA5 applied? Mesquite, Childers, and Gutierrez Street will be spring of 2025. Those are gonna be, John, are those Millan overlays? Those will be the Millan overlays. There's no utility work that is necessary for those three streets. We just need to wait for spring so that we can, you'll see all these say spring. Yeah, it has to do with weather and heat, and I guess you can't pave during the winter, so. New to me. But Water Street from 71 to Chestnut, well, we've completed the water and wastewater improvements there. We're gonna do an IDIQ paving service, and you'll see that hopefully commence in spring of '25 as well. Next is, oh, sorry.
The Water Street, just to remind me and everyone listening, from Chestnut heading north?
Yes, that's the, I'm gonna...
Oh, cool.
Next slide.
You read my mind, thank you.
So, yes, Water Street from Chestnut Street to Cedar Street. So we're, we've got some water and wastewater improvements to make first. We're gonna, so we're gonna combine some projects. We're gonna do pipe bursting along 71, which is a later CIP project. That engineer, when they're engineering those, they're gonna be here on site. We're gonna have them also do some of the engineering for the pipe bursting along Water Street. And then when that goes out for bid, it'll be a part of the bid construction for 71. So while that is mobilized over there, it's gonna save us a ton of costs. One, on engineering, 'cause they're already engaged, and two, the construction, they're gonna be here mobilized, and so they're gonna come over, do those improvements along with some in-house water and wastewater improvements we have to do. Once those are completed, then we're gonna go and do the paving and the Millan overlay on top of that so that all the utilities are done and completed. So this, you'll see some work being done in 2025. So hopefully by the end of 2025, we'll get to paving.
Thank you.
Yeah, we know that's a, that's a, that's a hot one. So we're working on it. It's just there's some engineering and some stuff that gotta be done. We just don't wanna tear the road up once we make it pretty.
Yeah, it seems like about this time last year, weren't we talking about, in addition to water, there was also Laurel and Farm or something like that?
It's Farm, Water, and...
Linden.
Linden, that's it, yeah.
Same, same sort of process. We gotta go through the water wastewater improvements. Some of Linden and some of Farm have some pretty significant improvements that need to happen, so.
You'll see Farm and Linden, those will be in '26. We're gonna, we're gonna move those down one more. We're gonna focus on water in these streets first, and then we'll go to the, go to the next ones in next physical year. So, yeah, you'll see some Silcoat and HA5 on some streets. I have those streets here. There's just some streets in Tahitian, mainly off of Briar Forest, Kona, Connie, Monicae over in Tahitian. And then the 2-inch overlay with under seal. John, where were those at? Oh, here they are. Those will be Hassler Settlement, Wagon, and Trail Drive. And then Tahitian itself will be in July. And then we're gonna partner with Bastrop County again. We're gonna do Piney Ridge, Post Oak Rim, and Tahitian for some... They're gonna do the work, and we're gonna provide the materials. We're gonna pay for the materials. Any questions about streets? We've got a lot of streets to do. Any questions?
I'm sorry, his water and wastewater can't keep up.
Yes.
And Curtis looking at me. It's a challenge to Curtis.
Yeah, so...
He got two new people, so he's gotta run.
So the faster we get the water and wastewater improvements done on Chestnut, hopefully we can get those through, over the wintertime and through the first part of the spring, then when summer comes around, we can get to paving, hopefully. That'll be the, that's the goal.
On Tahitian Drive, the perpetual, and it may be not perpetual anymore, but the water break that's at Tahitian Drive by the clubhouse, is, is that, because then it tears the road up? Has that been totally repaired, the water?
Is that their flush line? Tahitian, right there at the, I don't, is it Monicae?
They have, they have a flush there, but more north of that is where it would always have a leak, and then it would eat into the Tahitian Drive, the pavement. And that's, so it's there. So when the road is repaired, do we do that, or they pay for that?
They should do it.
Okay.
Who is "they"?
WCID. We'll have a, we'll talk to WCID and see what we can do. But yes, Tahitian will be a part of this summer's program, so we'll catch it then. Next is FM 969 wastewater line. This is the wastewater line to Valverde tied back to Bear Hunter. We gave a notice to proceed August 13th. 120 days for completion. So far, it's on schedule, and so far, it's on budget. It was a contract for 3.2 million with Inspection Services.
That's everything you see as you're coming back into town on 71.
All the green pipe.
Yes, all of that green pipe.
So I have some questions on this. I think I...
Go.
I have some questions on this one. So I went back and looked at, let me see here. We thought, I think we talked about dial development in the last meeting, and y'all cleared that up. So for this extension line, this is for Valverde, right, to Valverde. What is their financial participation in the cost for this line? Are we covering all of that cost? They're not paying for any portion of it?
They're not, yep, correct. Well, there is a portion for the, so they're gonna pay their portion of what the original public improvement plan cost would have been. So we will see a small reimbursement, but I wanna say it's in like the $300,000, $600,000 range of what the original public improvement plans called out for. They were to install a tenant. It wasn't a 10-inch. They were gonna go to the manhole that was closer, so it was less pipe, and they didn't have to do the bore. And so that's why all the expense for the, for, we're having to go under 71.
So if you recall, Councilmember Lee, this is, they submitted a public improvement plan that's part of their plat. We approve the public improvement plan. They get going, and then we say, oh, we don't have any room on that line. And so we had to go back to redesign.
Wait, are you referring to the pipe bursting? I'm getting the, that, you're, so I thought the pipe, the pipe bursting is also to serve Pearl River, too, no?
The pipe bursting, it is the same project, but that's why we had to go two different directions because pipe bursting has a limit on how big a line you can go up to. So the line right now at 71 is pretty much at capacity. To bring Pearl River online, to bring Burleson online, to bring Reed Ranch online, that's the pipe bursting project that has a go-in parallel to 71. We would have never been able to tie Valverde onto that line, and I'm not sure what the thought process was back then, but that's why we had to send them back down. And so the hope is, at some point, we're gonna recapture this through wastewater and revenue and tap fees, but at the onset, it is our expense, and that was approved in the, in the bond sale that you guys approved a few months ago.
So is there already, the elevated storage tank at FM 20, is there already a line, water line there serving Valverde?
There is a water line, yes.
That was on their dime.
That was on their dime. That was gonna be my next question.
Yes.
So they pay, who paid for land acquisition? We did, us or them? For that water line? Or was there land acquisition?
There was land acquisition for the easements and the right-of-way. We paid for the right-of-way, and I believe they paid for the easements, if I'm not mistaken.
Is that correct?
I'm looking back here. I think we paid for the right-of-way because we're eventually gonna turn it into a road, and then they paid for the easements portion. I think there was a cost share associated with that.
So there's a water line in place from the tank. We paid for, who paid for the construction?
Of the water line or the wastewater line?
The, the water line.
The water line, they did.
They paid for that. And is that, and that's not enough to serve Valverde?
No.
Correct?
That's their first, first phase, only the first phase.
And then, so from where that is now, another line will be extended from there? Or does that line go away and we put a whole new?
No, no, that line stays. That line will serve the initial portion. The elevated water storage tank goes on the Valverde property to the westernmost portion of the property. That is, that's gonna be our cost. That's redundancy to the tower right there, to the elevated water tank at Alton, and it's redundancy to our other water tank. But that's, that's on our cost that we recoup through impact fees, tap fees, and water revenue.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna have to expand our system westward.
And that, is that the tower we were trying to get Pearl River to locate there? Okay, so this...
Yeah, we're just relocating it to Valverde, which is a higher, Curtis, it's a higher elevation.
So can I ask some questions then about impact fees?
Sure.
Because that's what I'm trying to understand, why, who pays what and when stuff gets paid? So they have already started development, Valverde, yes?
Yes.
So it, when do, when do they start paying impact fees?
At permit.
I'm sorry?
At permit.
At permit?
Mm-hmm. So, and those are things we, so you will, we have an impact fee study underway. They've given us preliminary results. They've given us all the numbers. You will see that in your November packet. Our water system rates, we're gonna have a hard pass on. Our wastewater system rates will go up about $5,000. And so I'm gonna just prepare the council for the shock to that because the systems are very, very, very expensive to build. So this is, this is Valverde. This track right here is Valverde. I don't have, I don't have the lines on, but the elevated water tank goes about right here. In Valverde's preliminary plat, the easements needed are there. So land acquisition should hopefully be a lot less, but the construction of the elevated storage tank is about $20 million. And so water impact fees are about $8,300 a tap. And so the way it works is the developer has to install the lines, then they turn, at their cost, and then they turn around and dedicate those to us. All of that negotiation happens at a public improvement plan. That's a PIP. That's gotta go through Planning Commission, and then it comes to y'all. So they do their PIP first, and that's why we have to be very careful what we're approving on a PIP. We have to make sure we have capacity, and we have to make sure we have the ability to serve. So that's their first quote-unquote impact. They have to build the lines. Then they pay tap fees to tap into said lines. It feels like a double dip, but it's not. They're paying for their quote-unquote impact into the system, all of the water and stuff that we have to go acquire, all the facilities that we have to build. So right now, one tap for water and wastewater is about $13,200. So if you do the, if you do the quick math, and you do a water tap fee of $8,200 times 1,500 units, and that's just Valverde. So if you do a Reed Ranch... That's Reed Ranch. And so you can begin to see why the capital is there to build the facility. It's the ongoing revenue that we need to watch, our rates, to make sure that we're able to continue to generate the revenue that we need to maintain and operate the system. So it's kind of a three-part test.
So have we gotten any impact fees from them at this point? Are we...
Yes, for their initial, for their initial pay.
And...
Those are always paid at permit.
At permit. I guess I'm trying to understand with the cost that it's going to take to complete the lines, are we using the impact fees to pay for that cost?
We're using a combination of impact fees. We're using a combination of rates and any additional revenues that we may need, i.e. from a resale agreement or any other revenue we could be able to collect.
And on the other projects, so, so you mentioned a rate model. So how do we determine what the rate is? So I, I know you've talked about a rate model, using a rate model. So this project has gone through that rate model process?
So we have to engage a third-party consultant by law. They have to go and look, and we can't just give them dream projects. Things have to actually be on the ground and have some sort of submittal to them. So it takes them about three months to do that review, and...
Is that per project or for all of our projects?
No, it's every year we're supposed to do this.
Every year?
Every single year we're supposed to do this. We have to, well, let me rephrase that. We can do it every five years. Bastrop has done it every year because we're growing so fast. If the model shows at, you're okay, or you should actually reduce, we can say, I'm gonna pass. I'm gonna wait another five years before I do that particular model. If the model says you need to increase, that's what we bring back to the council.
So how do you know, when you're negotiating the contracts, how do you know what their impact fees are gonna be upfront? You run that rate model per project?
Per project.
Per project, right? And so what projects have gone through the rate model at this point?
So everybody that comes through, so it's not a rate model. So they give us the number, this third-party company. Can you drop that into Teams for me and I'll look it up right quick? So the company goes through and assesses all of our projects. They assess all of our projects under construction, and they assess our future projects that we need now because a project has been platted and it's going through the PIP process. And then they say, okay, this year, you're gonna have $30 million worth of construction projects. You need to be able to have this amount of revenue, and that translates into this amount of money per tap for residential and commercial. So when we're negotiating something like Valverde or a development agreement, we're saying, okay, your tap and impact fees are going to be X amount of dollars. And sometimes they, you know, huh. But we rarely negotiate tap and impact fees because I know we're going to borrow money on that. Those are revenue bonds, and I owe money on those things. So tap and impact fees are very rarely, 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 rarely negotiated.
So to date, we have, we have ran, so we have Valverde, which we're talking about now, the Pearl River wastewater line. That's been run through a model to determine?
So, so two different models. So it's not just the cost model. It's gotta run through a feasibility study. Can I even serve it? Is the line big enough? And if it's not, what is that oversize needed? And so when we also run models, like Valverde, for example, extending that line to Bear Hunter, if all Valverde needed was six inches of line, we say, yeah, you might only need six, but I know we're gonna need to serve 10. So the only thing the city pays is the difference between six and 10. That's participation. So they run through not just the rate model, because the rate is the rate is the rate. That's what they're gonna have to pay. But we run through a feasibility model. Can I even serve you? What's it gonna take for me to serve you?
I guess the, the main thing I'm trying to get is, why aren't some of these impact fees paying for some of this cost that we have? Because you can only use the impact fees for that particular project, right? So with, we have the elevated storage tank, and then the expansion at Bob Ryan Park. Like, where, how much of those impact fees are helping us with our budget?
All of it.
To reduce the cost? And all, and that money is budgeted, is part of our budget?
Yes.
Where, where in the budget is it?
We're in the red on that line because some of those projects haven't, haven't taken off. But by the same token, we haven't built them either.
And a lot of them haven't taken off because of the water line extensions and the expansion of the water lines, right?
Yeah. So here's the, here's the new gen strategies is who does this for us. And so we go through a complicated, what projects are actually in, and it's super, super, super governed. Like I said, I can't just tell them, oh, my wish list is to extend an 18 or a 36-inch here. It's gotta be something that is in the pipeline, literally. And impact fees can pay for these things. So the reason Valverde is the way it is, is there's a couple of reasons. One, it was staff error. It was our error. There's no, I can't, I can't sugarcoat it. I can't explain it any other way. It was our error. There's no, I can't, I can't sugarcoat it. I can't explain it any other way. And Valverde had agreed to annex. And so from an annexation standpoint, having seventeen hundred additional homes within the city population, otherwise we'd end up with another colony. Where I'm kinda stuck taking flows, but I'm not, I'm not receiving any property tax from those properties. So from a do what's right, and we're gonna make it up on the impact fees, well, we will make it up. It's sort of in advance to build that line because we're also gonna have capacity.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if we're just doing advance, cause I also wonder why we, wouldn't the city just pay from Bear Hunter to seventy-one and then Valverde pick up from, um, seventy-one to?
Not necessarily. They've gotta pay for their, that's what an impact fee is, their impact into the system. So if they need the line to connect all the way down to Bear Hunter, you gotta bring it down to Bear Hunter. You're the one that wants to flush toilets.
They do, right? We wouldn't pay from Bear Hunter to Valverde.
The only way we would pay is if we're participating in something, i.e. there's a development agreement or we need the line to be bigger, so we pay the difference of that participation. So here's, and this is gonna, these are big hairy scary numbers. So everything that we have in the pipeline right now, literally platted or in some sort of preliminary plat, development agreement, something. Right now we have, if I did everything tomorrow to get to a four million dollar plant expansion, I've got three hundred and one million dollars that I have to figure out how I'm gonna pay for. That's a hairy scary number. If I did a six million, it's three hundred and sixty-five million. Those are big hairy scary numbers. And so then you begin to see this, how much of that is impact fee eligible?
Oh wow, that's still small.
Which, that's why we've gotta make it up in rates. We've gotta make it up in, um, having a good master plan, so to make sure when a developer's installing a line, it's gonna have the highest and best service for everybody, so I'm not having to install that line twice or make it bigger again. Um, and a good example of that is we installed the twenty-four inch wastewater line that comes across, um, Mr. Consari's property from, uh, Addleton subdivision all the way across to Bear Hunter and beyond. And, uh, we did a twenty-four inch line. It needs to be a forty-eight inch line, at least. So we're gonna have to come back and run a parallel line or run something opposite. I don't wanna have to keep doing that. It would have been much easier for us to do a forty-eight and pay participation because at that point, they've mobilized, they've opened the ditch, they've opened everything. We're just paying for the difference in pipe size and maybe some pump changes. So master plan's super important for us to know where we wanna grow. That's, planning and zoning's job is to take a look at the first part of the master plan and that's what we're doing now.
Thank you.
Scary numbers.
Do we have a copy of?
You don't have yet.
Okay.
You don't. This is in your, this is in your November. So, um, I'll give you a, I'll give you a sneak peek. So that's an increase of thirty-five hundred dollars and it's gonna put us at almost there. But if you look at everybody else under us, they're not growing like we are. They're kind of already built out. Um, part of Buta is outside in their ETJ. If you're, if you're driving to San Antonio, on your left-hand side is ETJ for Buta, on your right-hand side is, um, inside city limits. So their service area, that's a mud. That's a giant mud on the left-hand side. Um, and so this is where we are right now. Some of the faster growing areas, if you were to install a septic system, that's what it costs. So, you know, we're, Carrie's like, no, it's not, it's not like that. So we are gonna be hitting the top of it, but when you're facing three hundred million over the term, you begin to understand why that's necessary.
I don't, I don't think I realized that it was that small of an amount, the impact fees.
And you'll hear developments say, that's too expensive. You're gonna expect affordable housing. But we did the math and thirty-five hundred dollars over the course of the thirty-year mortgage is like nine dollars and fifty cents a month.
Wow.
I know, I know. I hate to end y'all with a womp womp every time, but, okay.
Alright, that's, uh, yep, so we're gonna go to seventy-one pipe bursting project. Um, this one is the, uh, yes, uh.
We ran out of room on seventy-one.
Yes, on seventy-one, we're both, uh, uh, both of them, we've, uh, got a scope of work to Collier Engineering, one of the IDIQs. Uh, we're finalizing a contract for the design services and then we'll bring that contract to you guys, uh, hopefully on the twenty-fourth. And then we will get the OPC for construction, um, cost and, um, bring that to y'all.
And will any of the impact fees contribute to that? Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Everybody along that way?
Uh, uh, Pearl River, Burleson, Reed Ranch, um, will all contribute to this.
We just don't know how much.
Well, hopefully you guys adopt the impact fee and it's the higher amount. Uh, but yes, it's based on LUE. So for example, Burleson, uh, if you do six hundred and seventy-five times point seven five times five thousand and eighty-nine, that's what our.
Six seventy-five times what?
Six seventy-five times point seven five, cause that's an LUE for an apartment. Times, let's say, five thousand fifty dollars. It's more than that, but.
Uh, two point seven.
So that's what Reed Ranch would pay in.
Oh, did I?
So, no, cause Reed Ranch has a, that's a master meter. So what's the? Yeah.
On the final plot? What was it?
At the rate at the title of final plot? So we'll have to go back and look at theirs and see what theirs.
So the answer is yes. With just Reed Ranch coming on board, it'll pay.
Surely.
It'll pay.
Yeah, you had it up a minute ago. You did. It was like, I think you.
Well, but I did six hundred and seventy-five LUEs and it's not. It's, it's two large master meters or however many ma, eight, how, how many master meters, Curtis?
Oh, however many buildings, cause they're gonna be, yeah, they're doing, um, they're doing apartment buildings.
And where, where are the impact fees in the budget? Are they kinda spread out? The, what we receive that will be part of our?
Where do you have the number of budget? Impact fees as revenue?
Yeah.
In the impact fee fund? Three. Or six? It's in its own fund, Councilwoman. Uh, and I mean, I, I don't wanna say you have to rush development to rush development, but we borrowed, uh, a good chunk of money before Sylvia and that debt's coming due twenty twenty-seven. So it's really important that some of these projects do come online to pay their impact fees, cause we've got bills to pay.
Yeah. So I see here on page forty-five, it says impact fee fund, uh, budgeted three million for twenty twenty-five. That's what we're anticipating. For twenty twenty-five? Twenty twenty-four? Page forty-five? We're at four, four point eight for twenty twenty-four. And twenty twenty-five, three point four.
Yeah, I.
It seems kinda off because we have more.
I have four million dollars on my, it tells for a sheet, so that may go up. I was basing it off of. Uh, so it's greater than what's in the draw. I think it's gonna be a little bit more.
Yeah, a little over four.
Give me one second. I have a sheet that tells me what I'm basing that number off of.
And then the next page, the expenditures, three point seven from the impact fee fund, three point seven.
That's mostly debt.
Okay, so that's the pay, that's the payback, what we're gonna pay upfront, right? And that, that's anticipated to be three point seven.
No, no, where we're paying upfront, we're getting that from, I'm not sure who that is.
What is that?
That's how I feel right now, the cookie plot. Uh, the, the three point two that we're paying for Valverde is, uh, from bond proceeds that you guys approved. That payment won't be due for, uh, a few years.
Got it. Okay. Got it. Alright. Oh, that's gonna bankrupt us right there.
Well, it's scary. I'm trying not to do that, which is when somebody asks for a, uh, and, and I think you asked a question at one of the council meetings, what kind of math do you go through before you agree to anything? And you're aware of a development that came in with double digits, high double digits, almost three digits in a agreement that it wanted. And you just can't do that.
Right.
Can't do that. Well, this and the Valverde lines are imperative that we get those on because this bond issuance that we're, the bond sale that we're doing next Tuesday is reliant upon the revenues that we make off of the housing and all of the developments that are going to be connecting to this line.
When do we anticipate it? Completing?
Completion?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so both of these will be, as soon as we get them, uh, this one's gonna be probably, uh, yeah, so FM nine six nine's a hundred and twenty days, uh, which, um, Curtis just gave me, uh, his update. They're moving quick. They plan to be, they're trying to be out of here like November, if I'm not mistaken, but. He, he has till, contract was a hundred and twenty days. Yeah, contract was a hundred and twenty days, but today they're, they've already installed a eighteen hundred feet of twenty-four inch. They're starting on one side, the bore, um, they're gonna start on the other side on Monday. I mean, they're moving quick.
And this is the first three hundred and, um, the builder has said they're gonna do ten to fifteen homes a week.
Yes.
Hmm, wow.
Yeah, his build times for his regular homes are a hundred and twenty days too as well.
And then the pipe bursting?
Pipe bursting will be the same. As soon as I get Collier, I'll bring that to you on the twenty-fourth. Uh, we'll get the design. It's one more, mo, sorry, one month for survey, one month for design. And then as soon as we get the design, we'll put it out for bid and then we'll put the same caveat, a hundred and twenty days for construction. So the goal would be for this one is January, March, latest March.
Wasn't there some concern about them being like, maybe not in a good condition to pipe burst? Or have we determined?
I'll let Curtis answer that.
Wasn't there some concern about the pipe bursting and them not being, the, what's there now not being in good shape to do them?
There's two, there's an area that was being cut off, Reed Ranch. So instead of, so we'll pipe burst what's there, ten to twelve, and then we'll pick up from that twelve and go larger to the thirty-six. That'll handle all additional flow from Reed Ranch and everybody.
Right, but I thought there was concern about.
The quality of the pipe.
Yeah.
No, it's TDC pipe. That's.
Okay.
If you can fit a cable down through it, you can burst it out. And you're gonna be pulling in whatever.
Yeah, I think the original concern was going under seventy-one. So right, right at Burleson East, um, kind of in front of the vet clinic, the line turned and went under seventy-one. Um, and then it went to another fifteen inch line. Um, so we're gonna abandon that line in place. We're not gonna use it. We're gonna continue the bore cross in front of, um, going all the way down in front of Reed Ranch and tying it into the thirty-six inch so that we get more capacity out of it. Next one is West Side Water Service. We talked a, a little, a lot about this one. We're gonna have to do a preliminary study, finalize that scope of work and then, uh, get a cost of design and then, um, bring it back for a project. So this will be Valverde and, and, um, all the West Side Transmission Lines, uh, Ironwood, a couple of other projects. Uh, BPNL, uh, we are, uh, and the budget was a five-year study. Um, that study, uh, will be with McCord Engineering and then we're gonna set it so that every, they, every five years, they get a CIP project list and, and those projects are, they, so many projects per year over the five-year prod, uh, over the five-year span. Go ahead.
There is one project that we had to approve outside of this and that is the, um, oh, that's the next one. Yeah, sorry. There you go.
Uh, the next one is, uh, BPNL feeder number four design. Um, we were going to have this put into the CIP project, but instead of it being a part of the CIP list, we're gonna push it ahead and we're gonna go ahead and have McCord start the design work of feeder number four. Um, so currently we have feeder number one, two and three. You have the west, west side feeder, town feeder and then east feed. Um, we are, um, having a, uh, capacity issue with, uh, the number of EV chargers plus all the developments that are kinda going on.
On the east side.
On the east side. Um, and so we want to alleviate the load on, uh, feed number two and number three by building an additional feed, uh, number four. So we're, uh, we've gave Curtis the go-ahead to start with McCord and get, get in design so that we can get to, uh, get to this. This will, um, take on, uh, some additional EV chargers at Buc-E's, uh, Tesla and, uh, Mercedes. Um, and then any other additional EVs that come online. Those, those take a, quite a bit of our capacity. So, well, basically what, if we were to take and add additional chargers at Buc-E's, uh, our, our loads would go from, I think we're at seventy percent capacity now, they would go to ninety-two percent. Um, and without any upgrades and so.
Just bringing the Mercedes.
Just bringing Mercedes online. So we don't want that, that, uh, that means that no additional homes, no, nothing can go on that line at, at that point. So what we wanna do is get ahead of it, start to design a feeder and then get the construction going. So you'll see that project come forward.
Can we charge more for those? For that? For the electric vehicle charging station power?
Uh, I'm not sure. That's a question. I, I'm not sure if there's any legislation that prohibits, uh, a, a charge like that. Um, we.
And the reason I ask is because usually, usually you would be doing, you know, development agreements, new permits, you know, collecting fees associated with the extension of services to something new. In this case, it's an existing lot. I mean, I guess you've got some permits.
No, there's a service upgrade. Um, the Mercedes, uh, the service upgrade is half a million dollars for Mercedes. I'm not sure how much the, the build for feeder number four will be, but there are impact fees that they pay as well. And this came to light because when Mercedes presented, um, to bring them all online, like I said, would be at ninety-two percent. Can't do that because we've got a residential development coming by the high school, several commercial developments on ninety-five coming, can't tie up development. So what we've done is we negotiated Mercedes and, and allowed them to phase in, which allows us to do all of those things and time it so that in eighteen months, when they're ready to come full bore, then feeder number four is online. But that's a, that's a good question. Can I charge, can I charge for the charge? Upcharge. Upcharge the charge.
Well, I think rate-wise, I think you can, you can graduate your rates, I believe, so that, you know, so that everybody's on the same playing field. I will, can't you graduate your rates so that if you're in this range, you pay X? If you're in the next range up, you pay X plus, you know, one, if you're in the next range, X plus two. But I mean, I think that's how you do that, right?
Well, I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to look into that. I will tell you that the amount of electricity revenue generated by Buc-E's is less than the amount of electricity revenue generated by those Tesla chargers.
Yes, it's almost double.
What?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
But, and that's the main thing, is if there's a business case for it, that's, that's what we're running there with the electric company. It's a business. So if, if the business case works, then.
Yeah, the, the usage is almost double. The usage, what Buc-E's is pulling versus what those Tesla chargers are pulling with the new ones that came online, it's almost double the usage.
But again, that's to the east where folks are like, oh, no, these are never gonna happen over there. Yeah, right.
Um, any questions? So that's it. That's all the CIP projects.
And this is existing stuff.
Yeah, these aren't new.
Anything new.
Yeah.
We haven't brought you anything new. This is, this is stuff that's in past budget books. The only thing we are doing is taking a good, hard look. Does that still make sense? Like the transfer lift station line, does that still make sense? Is that still a feasible project? And does it make sense for everybody, all of the players who would be online that would be taking flows from?
Um, no, I just would like clarity on why the website says it's completed. And if it has been completed, I'd like a copy.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, Edie just gave me access like a week ago to this, to the. Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, Edie just gave me access like a week ago to this, to this ClearGov, so, no, 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 it wasn't new, it just, we couldn't figure out where these were at in ClearGov, and, and with Jimmy being out for maternity leave, we, we were having a little trouble trying to get this information put together, but yes, absolutely, we'll get it to you.
And Councilmember Lee, in the budget that Edie presents, I put OpenGov as a wishlist item, it sounds like it's not a wishlist item, it sounds like it's a, and it, because OpenGov feeds directly, it's not waiting on somebody to update a website, it's feeding directly from the financials. There's no maternity leave.
Well, another thing with that is I did go through several of those projects, and I was trying to figure out where they got their, how the financial numbers were, we did not do that, I did not do those numbers. It may have been done prior to me, I'm not sure, but I went to try to figure out how, where the totals, how they split it out. Cause I just have everything as a total number, and also, if you look in InCode and you pull the P O's, they're split out between projects, and so it's very difficult to figure out what goes with, what specifically for, um, project management and just engineering and then design, because it doesn't necessarily spell it out, it just says it's for this project, and so for me to go in and look for that, it, I spent about six hours trying to figure out Agnes, and then I was like, I can't do this for every single project, I don't have time for that today, cause I was trying to get all this.
Yeah, it just, what I found was splitting it out by design and construction, so it was telling you how much the design portion of the amount was, and how much the, so for the wastewater treatment plant, I wanna say that, someone that said design was eight million, I think it's this one, yeah, project engineering, eight million, project construction, sixteen million, for phase two. I broke it out.
And that was one of the ones I looked at, and I, since that project hadn't started, I didn't touch it, but, I did get Sims Borough updated, because I have kind of, I have looked at that one enough that I knew how to figure those numbers out, but then there were some that were just all kind of, they all ran together for, in my, on my spreadsheet, so, um, I will, I have, I've gotten a lot off of my plate that y'all will approve in the next two meetings, and so I'll be able to go back and touch that.
You hope, you hope it will approve, right?
I mean, yes.
So is, is a PowerPoint gonna be, uh, available to us?
Yeah, yeah, this one, yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, I'll, actually, what I'll do is I'll put that, I'll pull that out, I have that separate, I'll pull that out, and I will email that to the council. With the, and it'll have a map and the whole thing with it.
I like that, I like that.
We got it.
You got it, I'm gonna send it back.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Next item.
Receiving an update on the draft fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five master fee schedule.
Yeah, so I wanna, uh, I just wanna talk through this, uh, in the packet, we provided a draft of the fee schedule. When we started going through the budget and we started working on the fee schedule and making sure all the fees this year kind of aligned and, and everything is good, we noticed that there were fees that were on line on the Muni Code, which is our ordinance section, that were codified as an ordinance. But then, when it was codified here, it wasn't put into the master fee schedule, which was then adopted as a part of the budget. Um, and so we had the fee, but they may be conflicting fees, this may have been an old fee, and this may have been a new fee, and when this fee was adopted, it, by ordinance, it takes place of the old fee, but we didn't have the information in the right place. So the goal is, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take out Appendix A of the Ordinance, Code of Ordinances, we're gonna remove that appendix. We're going to put its own chapter in the Code of Ordinances, I'm not sure what chapter yet, it's probably chapters fourteen, fifteen, somewhere in there. Um, and we're going to adopt a master fee schedule, and we're going to adopt that as a chapter in an ordinance. And then we will bring that back annually as a part of the budget, and then anytime a department changes a fee, they will adopt that as a part of the fee schedule, not as an individual ordinance, and not as an individual, like, appendix within there, so that, we wanna clean it up and codify it, make it pretty, and make one document where there's only one document and one place to go. Right now, we had multiple different places, so cleaning that up. Um, a part of that, we will, uh, I will redline and any of the changes in fees that we did change this year that went up, whether it's impact fees or water fees, or, uh, which, uh, we'll talk about later, but any fee that changed, I will highlight that in red, I will make sure everybody's clear of what changed between last year and this year's fees, so that, um, there's clarity on that we're not, we're not revamping any, the entire fee schedule, we're not going up on fees, we're just cleaning up the documents, but I wanna make, we are changing some fees, so I wanna make sure we're highlight those and we show those.
We'll go over those in the next couple of slides, it's, it all fits on one slide, it's so minimal.
I just want anybody to think we're like swapping, we're like bait and switches.
I'm not sure why, it doesn't look like that on my screen. Of course, you know that. They're not hypothetical questions. Alright, do you have to read this? Do you have to read that?
I, I did. Discussion on the draft fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budget and provide feedback to the city manager. Ms. McElwain.
Thank you, okay, I was told to use my microphone. Okay, um, we've kinda beaten this to death, so I'm gonna go, I didn't do a whole lot of slides, we're gonna go through them really fast, because y'all know the things that we had on the list from last time. I did include, um, in this slide, the total revenue from what we had proposed, the proposal with adjustments, and then the, then no new revenue with the adjustments that we talked about in the last workshop. Um, I added in, so twenty twenty four, twenty five proposed, in the total revenue, I used the point four nine nine four to calculate property tax, um, and then operating expenses is as it was provide, or as originally given to you, and then for the adjusted, I put, um, I think about an extra ten or fifteen thousand dollars in some revenue items for parks, some parks revenues that I had looked and we had made a little bit more money, it wasn't a huge adjustment. Um, and then our operating expenses, I made the adjustments for all of the items that we'll talk about in the last slide, but we, they were all on that Excel document that Sylvia prepared in front of you at the last workshop. Um, and then the last column is the, uh, no new revenue with those same adjustments, and you will see that the one-time expenses is different from the proposed to the adjusted, because I did include the hundred and one thousand dollar uh, one-time payment for the T M R S going from twenty five to twenty years. And I know it looks weird that we're at thirty five percent all the way across, but it was such a minimal change that it was like four point nine and four point eight, so it was, but it rounded up, I'm sorry, thirty four point nine, thirty five point one, and it was very, very close, so it was rounded up to the whole number. And you can get to the next one.
Any questions on that before I go? So, this is the original proposed four point nine nine four, no adjustments. Four point nine nine four with adjustments that were included on your spreadsheet, this is the no new revenue rate of point five oh?
Two five.
Two five with adjustments.
And of course, y'all know the no new revenue rate is ba, is the rate that would generate the same amount of revenue as, than, as last year, based on the value of the same properties from last year, so that does not include new, new value. And then voter approval rate is the maximum allowed by law without voter approval. Um, the M and O rate will generate fifty two thousand eight hundred dollars less revenue than the no new revenue rate. So.
So, uh, you didn't do this with us last year. And, um, the no new revenue calculation went from arithmetic to a multi-page schedule looking like an IRS filing.
She hasn't.
Yeah, yeah, no, and y'all sent it to us, right?
Yes.
The no new revenue tax rate no longer means that, that first sentence, the rate that would generate the same amount of revenue than last year based on the value of the same properties from both years, that's the arithmetic method, and that was correct last year, that was what it meant last year. This year, it's different, the fact that our property values went up by like about seven percent overall, but then the no new revenue tax rate also went up, that's
There is a reason for that.
Okay.
Okay, so Senate Bill two gave some, hey, some homestead exemptions and some, some freeze property returns that caused some, cause I talked to, it baffled me too, and so I talked to the, to Ellen Owens, who is over at the tax, tax collector, tax assessor, and, and that was her explanation, she said, uh, cause I was like, this is really weird, and she was like, I've had several that have come back that way, so that isn't the reason, it has to do with legislation and not necessarily.
It's, um, property tax relief through the public school finance systems, exemptions, limitations, appraisals, and taxes, and property tax administration is the title of the act.
Yeah, so, you know, as we discuss the, the tax rate, the, the median home price went from two eighty eight, three seventy one to three hundred and eight, three twenty five, was from what you showed us last year, or, uh, at the last time we sat around these tables. And so that, at the four nine nine four, just that increase on the average taxpayer is gonna be a six point nine percent increase in their city taxes, leaving a rate fixed. If we went to the no new revenue rate, that would be a seven point six percent increase in taxes on our residents. And if we went to the voter approval tax rate, that would be a ten point five percent tax rate increase on our citizens. So, uh, I just wanna remind everybody that our Chief Justice John Marshall of the Supreme Court in eighteen nineteen called the power to tax is the power to destroy. And our residents are not giving this to us willingly, they're giving it to us under a threat, a threat of losing their homes, a threat of going to jail. This is a big deal, and we should not take more from them than we absolutely have to.
Um, I hear you, and so there is a couple of things we can do to keep it at the four nine nine four. And that is, um, we do have reserves above our reserve limit, and Edie will go through that, there are things that we could pay for in this tax year with some of those excess reserves, so that we can keep the four nine nine four. Um, the valuation is a function of the market, and is a function of the appraiser, so we're almost hostage, uh, not, and, and I say we, because everybody in Bastrop County, we're, we're hostage to what the appraisals come back, I mean, you have the power to, uh, protest. Uh, I don't know how successful those are, cause I haven't found myself in that situation yet, uh, but, so, I hear you, I feel you.
I'm just here to do what you told me to do.
I know.
Uh, the, so the no new revenue, no new revenue tax rate is, did calculate at point five zero two five, and we did calculate our original budget based on the four nine nine four. Um, voter approval is point five one six five. And you can see that the difference between the no new revenue M and O and the proposed M and O rate is about, not very big. We kept the debt service rate where it is, because we had already built in the Old Iron Bridge issuance, so. I changed this slide a little bit, because we did get sales tax for August, and I think that we're gonna come in slightly below what we budgeted this year. I, I don't anticipate having a problem collecting the nine, the nine million dollars. Um, I think that, I still think that that is a good number.
So, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars below? And even with that two hundred and ninety thousand dollars below, we're still projecting a surplus?
Uh, yes, it's going to be smaller, but it, we still will have a surplus, and we're still ahead of sales tax where we were last year. We're just not gonna hit that eight point seven million, or, maybe we will, I'm, I'm hopeful, but um, these are our budget priorities, of course, we've already gone over these several times, we know street maintenance, the Old Iron Bridge, we are, we included two additional police officers, two additional water wastewater employees, not much has changed, nothing actually has changed on our water wastewater BP and L. So I hadn't even really mentioned those a whole lot. We also did our cost of living and our step increases, and then have brought to you the retirement, going from twenty to twenty, twenty five to twenty years on our retirement plan. Again, we went through our capital improvements, and so we're not adding any additional projects yet. We all, we got to see our debt capacity really, and what we can, how much all of these things are gonna cost before we can make those decisions. Um, and then we had brought to you ten new police cars, but it's, I'm more comfortable with eight, so. The personnel costs, the cost of living increase was three point three percent, step of two point five, which they get on their, which we get on our anniversary date, and then retirement, the, the decreasing it from twenty five to twenty years, we did receive a rate pass for health insurance, so that stayed the same. The new recurring expenses in the twenty twenty five budget are new positions, the two new positions for, this is just for general fund, are the two new positions for, um, police. I did not include the parks position, and here it is on the last slide. Cost of living of six hundred sixty four, retirement reduction of nine thousand, and then the vehicle equipment replacement fund of five twenty six, and that number may go down just a little bit, but it'll, about five thousand dollars, it's not significant. This is our one-time transfer to the vehicle replacement fund, vehicle and equipment replacement fund, the three hundred thousand dollars is to help cover those eight cars. The two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the I T upgrades, and I, I think I sent you that information, didn't I? Okay, and then the fleet and facilities to cover a few extra vehicles that they had requested. Everyone else's balances covered their requests. In the vehicle equipment replacement fund, we're transferring, we have proposed to transfer six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in one-time funds from the general fund and fifty thousand dollars from water wastewater. Total expenditures did increase by sixty one percent, but there was a lot of, um, a lot of equipment and vehicles that were requested in the current year, but the fund actually was able to absorb all of that. We know that we have all of these street rehab projects, the street maintenance fund, we are estimating two point eight million dollars of sales tax, and we do have current bond funds of five point six million dollars to spend on this, on the streets.
This will be our first full year of tax collection, so that may be an underestimate, I think we had originally estimated three point one. Cause it used to be four point four.
Yeah, didn't we kind of fully fund the E D C, but then underfund this? Uh, but, but not we, just in the models, um, because the E D C budget, it seems like we gave them credit for the full amount, and then this is credit for, I don't know, ninety two percent of the amount, I just made that number up, but
Uh, when we had originally calculated it, so we were receiving four point four in this one.
So then it would be three point three and one point one.
Yeah, it's
But then the E D C in their budget, I don't remember the exact number, but it was close to the one point one, this is ten percent off of three point three.
Yeah, we'll need to adjust that.
Well, also, we're not hitting sales tax in E D C either, so
We're not what?
We're not gonna hit our sales tax number.
Talking about for next year.
Oh, for next, oh.
Yeah, I'm talking about the budget, yeah.
Well, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, because we budgeted that one at full value and this one at reduced value, so I just. No, I don't know that that matters, because ultimately if we do receive three point three, then it's going to show up in the account and it can only be spent on road maintenance.
Right, right.
So, you know, it's still okay.
It would have an impact, it wouldn't have an impact right there in here, in the verf. So we, we would feel it, and it's a way to pay them.
Yeah.
Here we go, here's the fees.
So we are not proposing any general fee changes. We, for water wastewater, we are proposing a five dollar base fee increase on water. This is based on a five-year plan that we were provided by, I think, New Gen in two thousand eighteen, and it was, it's been approved every year, and it's, we'll bring it to you again next Tuesday, but then there are increment-based fees for one and a half inch meters and up. So, and those are just according to the, to the plan that was provided.
And one and a half meters are commercial, not residential. Residential are typically three-quarter inch.
And we, again, the impact fee changes will be presented to you in November, and we'll, hopefully we'll adjust those at that point. I don't know about.
Sorry, sorry, I changed the slide while you, I changed the slide while you weren't looking. So impact fees to roads begin December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And so some of the conversation about blakey and some of the conversation about how do we pay for those roads, that's exactly how, so.
And then no fees will be changed for building.
Any questions?
Okay, and these are the things that, these are the changes that I made, the adjustments, and I put all of these in there. And the impact was not huge. I did, one, it'll just be easier for me to pull it up on my computer. I did do all, I did do four different scenarios, one with the four nine nine four with all of the adjustments. And the impact was, was very small. The impact was about sixty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars on the general fund. That's not including the one-time for the parks. That would have to come out of fund balance. There's room, there is excess funds for that. So. Anyway.
So is the council's feeling, what's the council's feeling about the no new revenue?
I've expressed my opinion.
Well, this is titled provide direction, so.
My opinion is that we should leave it at the four nine nine four. And even with all of these items to consider, we have the fund balance to support it.
Yeah, I agree with that just because of the fund balance too. Last thing I want to do is put a burden, a bigger burden on the people, because there are so many burdens that are going to come up anyway. So I agree with you on that.
We don't know what November holds is correct as it relates to ambulance services, relates to, there's a lot of unknowns.
If we, if we leave it the same at point four nine nine four, what does that put us, does that put us like behind next year?
It's not behind six figures behind, and it's really going to be a function of valuation. And this is, again, assuming the legislature doesn't change or give another, yet another exemption. I think we'll be okay, we just, we've got a lot of stuff coming online also.
Right, just some of our surrounding cities have had to jump quite a bit because they didn't do incremental along the way, and I just.
I would never present something to y'all that you have to take to the voters.
Right.
I'd rather quit.
Another thing that I don't have on this list that I feel like needs to be considered is we haven't absorbed an amount of legal fees this year. And that is going to have to be controlled a little bit better, and I'm not sure what the answer is, but we have budgeted two hundred thousand dollars this year, and I'm having to make up for that. Our sales taxes not coming in where it, where we budgeted. And we're having to figure, I'm, I'm having to figure out how to cover that with expenses that we did not incur.
Or anticipate, yeah.
So that for fiscal year twenty-four, and I don't want to have, I, I would rather not have that happen for fiscal year twenty-five. So that said, that extra cushion, cushion that we have.
So what, this is a great time for me to ask this question because when I look at legal fees and I see a lump sum and things aren't itemized, and it's not for you, Edie, it's just when the bills are submitted, I don't know. Like we talked, we spoke a few months ago about having so much allotment for each council member to talk to the attorney. And, and that way we know a number, but I just feel like we're out there in space and we have no idea. You know, how many times they're being called, what we're paying for, I would, if there is a way to get some kind of itemization of what we're paying for.
They do itemize their bill.
On like conference calls, things like that?
Yes, and sometimes it's kind of vague. Sometimes it's detailed enough that I can tell what it is, and sometime, but they're twenty-something pages long, you know, I mean.
So I'm just thinking for us, I mean, not even on that, but I think we need to kind of tighten our belts and say, hey, this is what we're going to operate under? This is, this is the money we want to spend or how much we have to spend instead of just, because I honestly, I've always having a business, only time I ever call an attorney is if I absolutely have to, because I know that clock is ticking the minute. So I would just like for us to have maybe some control on that too, on our side.
And, and, you know, the city attorney works for y'all. And so when the bills come in, I don't know how often he's talked, I don't know what work he's, I really don't. So I can't question, okay, Councilmember Meyer, did you really talk to the attorney for four hours? Because I'm not sure you're keeping track. So what I had proposed to the mayor, I don't know, a month and a half ago or so.
About six weeks.
Yeah, was that each council member be granted an allotment of say ten thousand dollars for legal fees? And you each be given a code, and that code has to be used on the bills. That does two things, one, it lets us have control, but two, it forces you, if you're out of money, but Councilmember Foster still needs help, maybe y'all can partner.
No, I don't think, I don't think trading like that, I think, I think bringing back after it reaches that whatever allotment we have, comes back to council for approval. Because obviously there's something that's, that's, that's important, because you're talking about sixty thousand dollars right off the bat. By, by providing that, that allotment to each one of the members of council.
And then the way, the way, sorry, Mayor, the way it works today is there's a general rule that what's provided to one should be provided to all. But from the bill, if you look at the bill, I don't know if Councilmember Lee, you got the same answer that Councilmember Blunkett got. I don't know if you asked the same question or a similar question, or was it, was it assessed, was it charged? We, I, I don't have any idea. And to Edie's point, there's some itemization, but you guys saw my last email, this Bastrop is coded to economic development. Not, not real sure that's clear. And then as it relates to development-related items, we have, Resin is one attorney who works at Planning and Zoning Commission. And then we have other attorneys, we have Ben who, you know, so there's a series of communications that are happening that are running up the bill quote unquote, and it's, it's hard to keep a handle. It's really hard to keep a handle. And I showed you guys the average was four forty-nine in the last three-year period, four hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to make sure that we're doing apples and oranges, whatever, I, I think we need to work with legal to ensure that they're coding in a way that's consistent with what our fiscal office needs in order to be able to track that, because if you start talking apples and you start talking oranges, something gets lost in the translation.
Well, I mean, just from the last series of emails, we all had three different numbers.
Yes.
You had a number, he had a number, and we have a number. What's the right number?
Yeah.
So where, where is that change made? Is that?
It's a policy you have to make here. That's y'all.
I mean, is that something that needs to be added to the charter? Is that ordinance, how, how do we make a change like that?
You could do it in the rules of procedure, you could do it in the code of ordinances.
Or just a resolution, most likely, right? Because we're just telling, it's more about communicating with our attorney that this is how we want to be billed. Right? So we can do that. And as far as the, you know, having, each of us having a budget, I'd hate to, I'd hate for that to become a goal, you know, I mean.
We could lower it to five thousand.
Well, no, I, I, I don't know what the right number is.
Yeah, I don't either.
So could we start by just saying what it is? You rack them and stack them and see, and so, you know, just report, you know, what this year has been to the extent that we can, I don't know if we have the detail in the building to be able to do it, yeah.
Per council member, okay.
And. Yeah, if he's not doing that, then first we have to start with that, I think. Then we might have a, a method to determine what a reasonable amount is.
Some of them do have, will have a name.
Right, it may say conversation with, you know, somebody.
It'll be just be like answering an email regarding this, this.
This topic, and the topic is enough to tell you which council member it might have been, right? Maybe, right.
I think that.
And then it's a different, then it's a different rate depending on which, which one of Allen's staff that he puts on range anywhere from one fifty to three hundred dollars.
And those bills don't come to me.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, to the mayor's point, he's not signing them either, but again, it's difficult for me to question y'all. Did you really talk to Allen for five minutes or ten minutes or twenty minutes, and I, you know?
And was it the same thing, you, somebody else talked to Allen? So there's a lot of, could be a lot of redundancy that we're paying for, but I think, I really think we need to have a requirement of, of the billing. I really think that needs for, for council, because I think if we don't know what we're dealing with, we have no idea how we can be efficient and manage it exactly, yeah.
And so from a development standpoint, those costs should be pass-through costs. I should be taking all of those costs into account when I'm taking money in for review. We don't do, we don't do escrow accounts here, so when somebody submits a project, and I'm not talking a residential project, but a larger commercial project, there should be a deposit into escrow, and that's where we begin to charge engineering and legal, and those fees get charged there, so it doesn't really hit us. We don't do that here. It's not been a practice.
I want to say something about legal fees. I mean, it's great that we have them, request that we have them broken down in different ways so we can monitor it, but also the legal fees are directly proportionate to our behavior. Like our behavior causes legal fees, so I just want to say that too.
The vast majority of our legal fees from the four forty-nine is mostly related to development, development agreements, lawsuits that are related to developments, tho, those kinds, the vast majority of that four forty-nine over that has been the wastewater and the water plants. This year, yes, a little bit different.
Yeah, this year is different.
Over the last, over the last.
But we play a part in that too, I just want to acknowledge, it's not just about how the attorney bills us, it's, we're playing a part in that as well.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we had a very unusual, very unusual past year where we had responsibilities where we had to spend some more legal money, you know? So there are conditions, and I get that, I just think we, just running a business, you got to be very exact on what you're paying for, and I, I just would like to see more transparency. Let's use that word, transparency.
Edie? Which way is on and which way is off? Kim, towards me is on.
Drop a bill in teams.
Well, what I was going to ask for was maybe a comparison over the last, because I, this year was an unusual, we know, but maybe the last three years, what was the average that we spent in legal fees, or is there?
Those would be difficult too, Councilmember Lee, because we had a lot of lawsuits with water and wastewater. We had a lot of land acquisition, we, I mean, so the, the work ebb and, ebb and flows. But, yeah, we can.
There were several lawsuits that had to be cleaned up also.
Is there a way to break it down to get us an average just from council members? I think I asked once before and you guys said that was a lot.
That would be a lot. So she's trying to, she's trying to drop it in so I can bring it up on the screen so you guys can see what we're seeing. Let me see if I have a gold bill.
I wonder if he has it on his end, like a column. I wonder if there's more information on his end that he could just drag, grab different columns, you know what I mean?
Well, he said it was a lot too. I asked from both sides, and they, both sides said it would be a lot to break it down, break it out, but.
And how much extra is that going to cost?
Yeah. What we're starting with.
It's thirty-two, it's a thirty-two page bill. And that's just one of them, there were three bills this time. There is detail, that's the reason why it's thirty-two pages, but it's, it's. There is detail.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have not one bill in my box. Mayor, could you forward his last bill? And I'll bring it up on the screen.
Sorry, I'm doing it, it just takes a minute to, I'm trying not to do four hundred pages of.
I'll just, I don't even get to see it.
So.
Well, we go up on that rabbit trail.
Yes, so the new, basically, y'all can just tell me if you want these things, and I, they've already been incorporated into the budget. The new parks employee, the net was twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Boobash was ninety-five hundred dollars. The Wassel Fest Christmas lighting and Mary on Main, twelve thousand five hundred. A new, I mean, a, a new request for community support to Friendship Baptist Church for twelve thousand five hundred. And then the Dance Troop Celebrate Sisters Moses Project for twenty-two thousand. The Open Gov Software, I did drop it in there, it's seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't think that it will be that much going forward. I think that it's, that's the initial cost to get it started up, plus the, and I added that on top of what was already budgeted, because I know that we're going to have a little bit of overlap. So that may end up being a little bit less. We had a savings of thirty-two thousand three hundred dollars, reducing police cars from ten to eight. And if we bump it up to ten, I'm going to, I would have to bump up our one-time expense fifty thousand more dollars to cover the cost of the extra two cars. The one, and then the Parks Board requested three hundred thousand dollars one-time expense for some improvements to Bob Bryant and I can't remember what that was.
The water park, the splash pad. Splash pad was a hundred. Improvements to replace the swing set at Bob Bryant's was a hundred.
And erosion at Fisherman's.
And then erosion at Fisherman's.
And then the Cur Commu.
Yeah.
Yes, and then the Cur Community Center appears for forty thousand dollars in the hot fund. We have some ex, we had some extra funds in there, and so that would just be, that would just eat up some of that.
The parade route, I think it was sixty-two sixteen, right, for two parades, thirty-one oh eight each?
Thirty-one, yes.
Yeah.
And we said.
Homecoming?
Homecoming, Juneteenth.
Christmas already covered.
Christmas is already budgeted.
It's budgeted. Mardi Gras does not, Kathy said. Mardi Gras doesn't go.
Make it back to my spreadsheet.
We did, it was, it was, it was two, it was just two. We said, what we said originally for, and then we realized that there was, Christmas was already taken care of.
Because the homecoming at the school does not, they go down Spring Street also.
Right.
So everyone listening.
Correct, sixty-two, sixty-two sixteen, so that parade route change.
Yeah, sixty-two sixteen.
Where does the Christmas come from?
Christmas is already in the budget.
Okay. So, um, going back to the police cars, you, you're saying that we're all good with this as is with eight cars. Where are we with ten cars?
If we did ten cars, we would have to add thirty-two thousand eight hundred to their payment from the general fund and move fifty thousand, so it's an eighty-two thousand dollars.
From the general fund.
From the general.
Eighty-two three hundred.
Who wants to speak?
No, I called her up in case you had any questions. Would, would eight instead of ten be detrimental to operations?
No, we were able to hold on to some older vehicles and, and basically we can operate with eight, we'll be good.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for confirmation.
And my plan for the, for police is to make it to where we are able, part of the issue is that our leased vehicles is, is a large number right now, and as those start, as we get through paying for the lease, I hope to either purchase those cars or buy cars in their place, and that way we're, we are able to finance our vehicles instead of paying for a lease that, you know, we have mileage issues out of, or maintenance costs, disposal issues, whatever it may be, so.
I'm great with those numbers, but can I ask you a number in particular on a certain page?
Sure.
It's on page forty-nine, and it's under, um, well, actually, it's like, um, special events.
In this book, okay, yes. I don't have any. Stored.
It's on the screen, yeah. Not in the book.
Oh.
Oh.
In our packet, the packet page.
Oh. Okay.
On the, um, and I'm just gonna throw these three, because these are three that kind of stood out to me, but on the quarterly luncheons, we've got going from two to three, and holiday party, sixty-eight hundred, and then, and I'm, I'm not advocating not to have anything, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just, but the appreciation lunch, uh, September, going from eighty-two fifty, so if you total those three up, it's seventeen thousand fifty dollars, and if we increase from eighty-six, eighty-two fifty to sixteen-two, that's twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars, so. My question is, what is this, and is there a way to decrease these numbers? Tanya?
Yeah, so, everything's gotten more expensive. Right now we have twenty-three eligible people, twenty-three eligible people to retire. Um, at, and, yeah, twenty-three, and then this next fiscal year, that number goes to twenty-eight employees. So, you know, every year we call employees, you know, are you considering retiring? We have some longtime employees that are considering retiring, so we've increased that budget to reflect that. When somebody works here twenty-five years, we throw a little bit more of a, something than just a potluck that we do if somebody leaves after five years or, you know, a few years, so. So, it, it may not come to fruition that we, they, they leave, but they're considering that, so we had to increase the number to reflect that.
So on the, the appreciation lunch going from eight thousand two hundred and fifty to sixteen thousand two hundred? That, that's a huge increase. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying for twenty-five, it's.
The employee appreciation luncheon specifically?
Yeah, says September, page forty-nine on the
packet. I don't have page forty-nine.
Right here on the, on the screen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm looking at my spreadsheet for what I submit, so I need to take a look at that, because that's not what I have on my number, so.
What's your number?
I have, I have mine going from the city pens and appreciation from, uh, twelve thousand to sixteen thousand.
Yep, that's, that's what that is, so city appre- oh. Yeah.
See the, yeah.
So it's nineteen two hundred total, so sixteen two hundred, five hundred, a thousand, and fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
So the total is nineteen two hundred. What's your total?
My total goes from twelve thousand eight thirty to sixteen thousand two hundred.
Okay, so there's a double dip right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, this, this number aggregates all of these numbers.
But the the twenty, twenty-four numbers are kind of wonky. If you look, five, six, eight, three, those are, those all add up to be.
So, we'll look at that, that, that turns out to be about a three thousand dollar reduction.
Okay, and, and the only reason I'm bringing this up, because I, I'm just pointing out where things kind of have gone up quite a bit, and here's my point. Because the screen before had our, what do I call, community partners that do the work that we can't do. So before I would ever cut any community partners, I would cut something in this range. That's just my point that I'm making.
Your appreciation lunch, say that number again, Tanya, went from eighty-two fifty to?
It went from twelve thousand eight thirty to sixteen thousand two hundred.
Okay, so there's a three thousand dollar difference here, so we, this is double counted then. So what's aggregated for yours is here, and then we separated these out, because here's the three thousand, five hundred for retirement, a thousand for service tax, and fifteen hundred for new employee luncheons, but really you just went from twelve eight thirty to sixteen two hundred.
That's correct.
Okay. So reduce this nineteen two hundred by three thousand dollars.
Sylvia, are you, where in the, where in the budget is the cost for a city engineer? I couldn't find that.
It is in.
Is that under departments? Would it be under departments? Do we have a city engineer?
We do not have a city engineer as of yet. One of our employees just passed his PE two days ago.
Okay.
So we have a PE almost and a CFM now. Both of those have been outsourced, both of those functions have been outsourced.
Are we, are we required to have a city, uh, city engineer?
We do, we have them by contract, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So half of our, half of our, we do have an open position for a city engineer, half of it is included in the general fund.
The general fund.
And half of it is included in water wastewater.
Okay.
And it really should be development services, um.
Well, that's why I was looking, and I, I figured, but I couldn't find it. And do we pay for, for their certifications? Does the city pay for their certifications?
Um, through reimbursement.
Okay.
Um, he can't get an official stamp yet, he needs one more year in service, working to get his official PE stamp. But what we have him doing is project management. He's doing all the pre-reviews so that we reduce the engineering costs when we do send it out to the engineer.
And do we have a particular engineer that we use, or it's a bid? How does the?
Um, but we just went through the IDIQ process, so we have several. We had been using, um, Tony Bonadorno and Renee, what's Renee's last name? Aguilat?
And we're not using them anymore.
So Renee is still on the Agnes Street projects, and, uh, Tony, Tony's contract is expended out. Tony, Tony's contract on Blakey is still active, but Tony's contract for reviewing development services items is expended out.
Is there, um, how much is budgeted for a city engineer?
So, um, I don't know. Tanya, what is the job classification that pay for the engineer?
Oh, wait, you want to know how much, oh, hold on, I can tell you that. For the director of, for a director of engineering, is that what you're asking? Okay.
Is the director in the city the same thing? City engineering and director of engineering, same, same title?
Same.
So it's the three hundred and forty-five?
A hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
A hundred and forty-eight thousand.
That's base salary, that's not, that's not.
The one forty-eight.
One forty-eight is base salary.
Right.
All right, yes. And so seventy-five of that comes out of the general fund, seventy-five comes out of. Correct.
What's the three forty-five?
This is half a director of engineering, two project managers and one.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
So the goal has been internal staff development, so, um, Alondra and Elizabeth both sat for their CFM. Elizabeth was successful, Alondra will, um, retry. Um, we've brought GIS in-house also, we don't outsource that anymore. Um, Hudson sat for his PE and was successful, he needs one more year, so hopefully we're, we're developing our own internal staff, so we're not having to outsource that stuff.
Except for, like, bigger projects, right?
But those will be out of.
The ID, IDIAC.
Well, no, but those will be paid out of the project, so if you guys go borrow money for five million, it's paid out.
Got it. Not in the budget.
Not in the budget.
Got it.
I think we almost rejected those two. Okay.
So are we good on all the community partner funding, or are we going to that slide next?
Sorry, don't mean to make everybody dizzy.
Um, the one fifty-eight, sixty, yes. I think the, I think the discussion here is the in-kind.
Right.
So.
And also I believe that pertaining to that, Edie, wasn't it, um, on the Pines and Prairies, wasn't that going to be in-kind, or Sylvia, was that a question, that it really wasn't out, it was in-kind that they were asking, or something?
They were asking for some assistance with, um, road construction, but it's a private land.
Okay, okay.
Did you have the conversation with them?
No, I'm not, because it's, it's private. We'd all go to jail, so we can't do that.
So we can't.
That would be like a case in Elkin.
And we can't do, we can't do an in-kind to help them with their bills.
They're, it's privately owned.
Got it. Not nonprofit.
Um, they may be a nonprofit, but they are not private, yeah.
But it's private land.
We can ask legal to come up with some creative way, but.
So the question.
I don't want to be creative, I want to be legal.
Edie, the question then on the in-kind, what, what was it, we were, uh, were we having conflicts with dates and things, or requests?
We're forty-nine and fifty-one percent already with the convention center, so that's with what had been approved, um, last year, so we had four events approved last year, total sixteen thousand. So this year, there is one, two, well, one, two, three, four, five, so there's some additional requests. City Bashop facilities, I'm sure that, I'm sure that also means convention, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And I'm not sure what permits means.
In the streets.
So we go from, um, sixteen thousand to twenty-eight thousand, and the issue with that really becomes, um, again, the percentage that we use the convention center for hot quality expenses.
And it's not the dollar amount.
Correct.
It's the.
Tying up, yes.
It's the fact that you can't use it for a out-of-town event on that day. Especially if it ties up a weekend night, like a Friday, then you may lose it Friday, Saturday. That's two days you lose in exchange for the one. It's a.
So I guess, could you make it a stipulation that they use it during the week?
Yeah, like a Tuesday through Thursday, or Monday through Thursday.
Like, yes, you can have this, but.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna like Kathy.
Yeah.
I was like Kathy, I was like Kathy Danielson, who's actually doing the work over there.
Yeah.
Because I saw her face over there kind of fainting.
Yeah. Because I love everybody, so. Most of those, I do believe, are on the weekend, on a Saturday, some of those larger galas that they plan for their fundraisers. I know some of them are on a Thursday, you know, I think the Family Crisis Center Luncheon may be on a Thursday, uh, but I am here to do the will of the council and.
But can we stipulate that if they're, I know you're saying most of them are on a Saturday, but in that instance, can we stipulate that if it's on a Saturday? Fridays too, or just Saturday?
Some of them use it, they'll use it for two days, like Friday for the setup day, and then Saturday for their larger event. Most of them, I believe, those keep just to a one-day event.
I mean, maybe we could stipulate that if it's on a Friday or Saturday, then there would be some cost or all costs, whatever council decides, um, and then during the week, we could offer in-kind.
What's your less busy day?
Uh, it's, it's really crazy. We're kind of being booked a lot over there. Um, Mondays and Tuesdays, you know, um, are kind of slow, and our Sundays are slow, although now, because we're booked on Fridays and Saturdays, more people are asking for a Sunday. You know, so we have those dates available, but be- being a weekend, uh, if anyone wants to book a Sunday, they have to book the entire facility to book a Sunday, like, full rate. That, that's someone else call to book it.
Okay, so, you know, there's concern about these additional ones asking for in-kind donations of, uh, you know, so can you kind of peruse that list yourself and see, you know, are these ones that already have dates, we, they've just been paying their own way before?
Feed the need has paid.
And so that's not gonna change the, your percentages.
Not, not if their event is before September thirtieth of this year, then like next year, in that budget cycle, that would affect us.
Yeah, it would affect your money, but not your, your percentages of in-town versus out-of-town. That's the concern, is that is that you couldn't even book a, an event, even if they were paying for it, because that would be.
Yeah, that, it's a local, all of those are considered local. I'm sorry.
Right, but so like, the question is, is there a delta there? Is, if they're already there, they're already local, then they're not gonna affect the percentage. If they hadn't been there and they're local, then they will drive down the percentage of out-of-town.
It, it is, but if they're paying is a big point, is, right, because if they're paying, then you've still got your revenue, even though it's local revenue. And right now, because we're at forty-nine percent in the fifty-one, I, I would caution all of you to realize that that forty-nine percent of our revenue is a huge number for local.
We're at fifty-one, just, just to get that right, we're at fifty-one, because it still qualifies for a hot.
No, yeah, but the forty-nine local is what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is, that's still very important to us, because, um, as, I've been over there for fourteen years, and y'all know the deficiencies that we have over there, so it is, it's hard to get the non-local business here. So I think us having that forty-nine, fifty-one, we pretty much hit the magic numbers right there. Um, we may be able to flip some of that to non-local business if you give me about three years in advance, because that's how far they book out that type of business, so if we're going to swing that way, we would need to probably maybe taper that, unless you, you don't want that local revenue, but I, I think that's the magic number right there. I don't know if I'm helping, but.
So last year, we assisted with the Children's Advocacy Center, which we didn't really assist because there was a conflict, right? They ended up not using.
Ca- I believe that was CASA.
Oh, CASA, okay. Children's Advocacy Center, um, Bashop, the Family Crisis Center, the Long-Term Recovery, and the Emergency Food Program. So those were the four that we assisted with in-kind donations. This year it's those four plus, uh, the, the, uh, Bashop Pregnancy Resource Center, Children's Advocacy Center, uh, Combined Community Action Center, uh, Feed the Need.
And Feed the Need is before the end of September, right? So that one.
Well, this is for next year.
Gotcha, okay.
So Sylvia, do you have a suggestion?
Um, so I think if we're gonna be fair, uh, maybe you reduce the subsidy to two thousand, and, you know, everybody gets two thousand, and they've got to pay a difference, so.
But that's not the, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine with any version of that, but that's not the problem.
Well, and a Monday date.
Fifty-one, forty-nine, yeah.
And a, and a Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, because if you're taking up a weekend date and you're preventing an out-of-town event from happening, that's not just a two percent swing.
Yeah.
It's a two percent down on a two percent, I mean, it's a four percent swing by, by moving the two percent one direction. But these aren't new events. There's events that have already taken place. They've just been paying their own.
I think there are several new ones on here.
Well, Feed the Need, they, they've just been paying for those events, right?
Anyone on this list who hasn't used the convention center yet for a gala that's on their name, like.
Not using it this year.
Right.
I think they've all used it, but some have gotten it as a comp and then some have paid.
Right.
Yes.
This is the, this is the important part of the conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Combined Community Action.
I'll have to go back and look to see, I can, um, because there's CASA and then there's CAC, the Children's Advocacy Center and then but the Combined Community Action.
I don't remember that.
I, that may be a new one too, but if you look, they say COB Facilities. Lisa, you know, Lisa gathered all of this information for us, those applications and all of that. Some of that was like to use the library or some of it was to use City Hall. So that, the COB Facilities may not be the convention center.
So I think it has to be a combination of two things. It's got to be a perhaps a two thousand dollar subsidy or fifty percent subsidy. Fifty percent subsidy of the cost. Let me be very clear, because some of these agencies get very extravagant and the cost is sometimes more than four thousand dollars. So fifty percent of the cost plus a date that is actually free in the week. That, that, that may not go over well, but.
And I, I would like to add that I received several phone calls after the last budget workshop to make sure they had their dates for twenty-five and twenty-six. So I just want to make you aware of that.
On Friday and Saturday.
Yes.
Yeah, but I, I guess I could see, uh, um, partial subsidy for the premium days, you know, the weekend dates and then a, a larger subsidy, a full subsidy, whatever for, you know.
Yeah.
And, and basically incentivize the groups through the move.
So are they having like party fundraisers or like Feed the Need? Are they having like a?
Oh, it's their largest fundraiser of the year.
I just.
Yeah, it's, yes.
I was in the wrong crowd at the last Feed the Need. There was like African safaris.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, some of this discussion is also based around a, not a theoretical problem, but a, a problem, a real problem where I, we don't have data, right? So how much of, of next fiscal year is already booked in the convention center and what percentage and?
I would say we're at least maybe sixty-five or seventy percent already booked and that's with returning clients, whether it be local or non-local.
But is that weekends? Is that what you're counting?
Oh, yeah, the weekends and even during the week now, you know, we have the Chamber Luncheon today. We have Farm Street Opry tomorrow. We have the Employee Luncheon Friday. We have Down Home Ranch, which is out of Elgin, that's doing their big fundraiser Saturday night, you know. So, but I can look at that and, and tell you exactly what days are booked. That's another thing too, when we're talking about the whole marketing and all of that. We're, we're getting fewer and fewer dates left that we can even book, right?
Which is why the importance of the week.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want a subsidy, it's gotta be a.
Yeah, and what we are finding, and you can probably look at the calendar and see what does work well over there. And it's really not so much the conferences or the conventions, because we don't have the breakout space. It is more the trade show, non-local that's coming, whether it's the gift shows or the gun shows or the knife shows or the Corvette Invasion. Those seem to work there because they're smaller trade shows and we can handle that. I think we'll always have an uphill battle trying to book it as a co, like truly convention conference center.
Yeah. I, I see the convention center, those Monday, Tuesdays as perishable dates, same as a hotel. If you don't book it, you had that one opportunity to book it and you've lost it and you've lost the opportunity for revenue. So I mean, I think that's a good starting point for a policy. If they want a subsidy, it's got to be on a Monday or Tuesday.
I think that's a good incentive. I really do. And because we're gonna be running the air conditioner anyway or the heater, so.
So where does that, where does that though? My only concern, you're saying everyone on that list, Sylvia?
Who wants a subsidy?
Um, my only concern with that is like the food pan, I know the Food Pantry has consistently gotten a comp. So you're saying they would no longer get the comp, they would get a subsidy?
Well, so it's, I call it a, it's, it's still a subsidy. So the subsidy would be reduced to two thousand dollars to give the other folks on here.
For everyone.
Mm-hmm. So everybody's, everybody gets two thousand and then plus they're required to book on a Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, my only concern is those, those organizations that have been consistently getting comps.
Well, last year, the Food Pantry, the Empty Bowl Project, they were comped four thousand dollars, but their event was like six thousand, maybe sixty-eight hundred. So they actually paid twenty-eight hundred, but they were allowed that four thousand dollar comp.
Yeah, that would be my only concern, but.
I think it would de, um, impact their ability to raise funds if they're having their big fundraisers on like a Monday and Tuesday. Like, it's like just totally different ballgame.
And previously, the four that were getting the comp was because of their contributions to the, the gravity of their contributions to the community.
Yes.
So taking that away, I, I don't know that I feel comfortable with that, but finding that balance for the other organizations, I, I don't know where that is yet. But I, I would feel really uncomfortable taking away from those four that we rely heavily on in our community.
And they probably rely heavily on that.
Yeah.
Can you, can you lay, can you put them in a category of a core group that we've been, just somehow classify them as the ones that have been the core, that we, that are the big ones that have depended on that? Can we establish? And I'm certainly not grandfathered in.
Yeah, because I'm certainly not saying that one organization or the other doesn't deserve it by any means, but to put a new policy, since they have been, it, it would, as y'all are saying, it would impact. It absolutely would.
So we have some, some of these like Long-Term Recovery who used to get ten, they're asking for twelve and the convention center. Eight thousand now asking for ten, four fifty and the convention center. Uh, twelve-five now asking for twenty plus the convention center and Fisherman's Park. Ten thousand, nine thousand, so.
Combined Community is not asking for the convention center. I just looked on the application.
They're asking for.
Um, sometimes they use offices at City Hall, but they don't think they're using that.
Um, and then they're not asking for a facility, but I don't know what permits means, so twelve to fifteen thousand. So, um, there's some, there's some increases, so perhaps we keep them at a flat funding, they keep their convention center usage?
Well, when does the Long-Term Recovery team use the convention center? They don't use it for events, do they?
They have a tenure. They have in the past, but they're, um, they've got their new facility, right? And if I'm thinking correctly, they have their new facility. They thought they were going to have to use it this, uh, past August, but then they ended up having their event in their new facility.
So they do have an actual event? Have they used it? I don't recall them actually using.
They've had it like after the fire, they used it maybe for a couple of years and then.
That was one of the reasons why the discussion was to comp them, because they're using it again for the community.
But I don't think they're, they haven't asked for the convention center. They said the City of Bastrop Facilities, where it's either City Hall for a meeting or the library for a meeting. I don't think they're requesting to use the convention center or they haven't yet.
We have.
I'm asking right now.
Yeah, we have the four thousand.
So that was a twenty-three, twenty-four request.
One of the newer ones is Feed the Need, because they've always paid, you know, and they're asking this year. And, um, the Pregnancy Center, they received it last year. They had a comp last year. Family Crisis had a comp last year. The first responders, of course, they're not asking, although I believe Becky does that luncheon for all the first responders and that's comped. And then the Food Pantry.
That's two different, two different groups.
Okay.
One is actually called a first responder group and what she throws off in the chamber.
Is for the first responders, okay. And there are other nonprofits that book it and pay and they get a fifteen percent discount.
And one time you had talked about basing, um, the discount on whether or not they were a nonprofit. Remember? I think you and I had that discussion once before.
The original like fee schedule, like back in the day, fourteen years ago, when we did this, there, there is a fifteen percent nonprofit discount for any nonprofit that comes, that has their letter, that they're a nonprofit, it's a fifteen percent discount. Yes, sir.
Kathy, have we, have we always done in-kind of it as long as you've been here? Have we always done that?
As long, we've done it as long as anybody at City Hall has told me to do it. That's, that's how an in-kind is determined. Like I, I don't make that on my own, you know, but there have been times where I believe there's been phone calls made to City Hall or the, the council, mayor council, where it was determined it would be comped.
I, I like the fifteen percent discount. To me, that, that kind of makes it fair, because if, if you're a nonprofit, you get fifteen percent off, it's not comped. The, um, it's not, all of it's not comped. But if you're a nonprofit, you get a fifteen percent. That would maybe stifle the amount of groups that come and ask for a comp, because it's just, if you're a nonprofit, you get fifteen percent off. That still though, takes away from my four primaries, as I'll call them. So, you know, there, there could be, well, how did they get to become the primaries? There could be that conversation, but for me, the Children's Advocacy Center, they do training, I believe. And then again, the, the greater service from the, the Food Pantry and the women's, which is the Family Crisis, are they on there somewhere?
Bastrop County Women's Shelter.
Family, yeah, fam, I just, they provide, you know, a greater need.
And, and I can say the Family Crisis Center, they use their four thousand dollar comp at their Christmas gala. They're doing their luncheon coming up and they're paying for it.
They're paying for it.
For the luncheon, because they had used their four thousand dollar comp for their Christmas gala.
So it's not just every time we want it, we comp us.
That's right.
And that's kind of where I get, go back to the fifteen percent. You get fifteen percent if you're a nonprofit. These are our primary, primaries.
Well, all of those are not for profit.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but, but you have, but everybody gets the fifteen percent off.
Yes.
You go to everybody getting the fifteen percent off with the exception of our, what we deem as our four primaries. I keep throwing out the four primaries. And even in the four primaries, the Long-Term Recovery Team doesn't even, did they text you back?
Um, she said they don't need it for an event, but they need it, they may need it in the spring. I'm clarifying whether they need it in the spring. And she said if it was cut, they would be fine. And I said, I'm not talking for, I'm not talking for emergencies situations.
That's the other key.
She said, no, we would be fine. So if you cut it from Long-Term Recovery, they're okay.
There's a, the IRS website is, holds up as three hundred and seven nonprofits, uh, headquarters in the city of Bastrop, Texas. Now, we know that Bastrop, Texas mailing address exceeds the boundaries of the city limits, but, you know, it still just gives you an idea that there are many, many nonprofits. So we, and, and I'm not saying this to debate or, or speak against the idea, I'm just putting into the, into the, the conversation that, you know, a, a policy for nonprofits will capture a, you know, could, sorry, yes.
It's already there. She said it's already there.
No, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the things I asked Kathy about was what it is financially, what does it do if you, instead of having a fifteen percent discount for nonprofits and then having these comps, do away with the comps and do a forty percent discount or a fifty percent discount? What is, you know, what does that do to the numbers? And then everybody's being treated the same. And I don't, you know.
It would increase revenue.
Throw out there.
It would.
It would increase revenue. If you're giving a four thousand dollar comp and let's say their event is thirty-six hundred dollars and we comp it, what, eighteen hundred? And they pay eighteen hundred, because not all of them even reach that four thou, they do now, because they go, I'll add this and I'll add this to try to get it up to that four thousand.
Three months.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That might be a more fair way to do it, honestly, because we can't, it's just too hard to, we can't put this group here and this group. I, I just want a fair policy all the way around and that, that might be the way to go.
Are we recovering all of our costs that in doing that?
Oh, no, no. And then I would, we would need to know is that forty percent for all nonprofits or forty percent of our community support groups? Or, and then fifteen percent, let's say a nonprofit from Austin comes in and wants to rent it, then that would be the fifteen percent for them?
You could do a bigger percentage for local nonprofits than, no, that's a lot of.
I don't think that's something we're gonna be able to solve tonight. So, um, Kathy, would it be appropriate for you to like take a look at that and see?
Oh, sure, the dollar amount.
Because we wouldn't want to make a policy, right? All nonprofits get fifty percent off and when half of like.
Right.
Corvette Invasion is probably nonprofit. I mean, all these people are probably nonprofits and a lot of them are anyway. And so, but that just.
We could do a lottery. We could give them their allocation and we do a lottery for four slots.
Yeah, so.
What does a lottery look like?
Any of these kind of ideas.
A lottery is they're, all of them are put into a, uh, sort of a bingo ball and pull a number. Yeah, pull a number. Because it may not be the same four this year as it is next year, as it is next year, as it is next year.
Could social media reel.
Yeah. Um, they all get their blank.
Right.
But the convention center is, would be on a lottery base.
Even that blank is thirty percent more than what it was last year.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's my point is, is which pot and, uh, at, at some point, what's this cap? And, um, you know, we already know we have a, a stated cap at the convention center because of hot funds, so. It could be that we say we've got four, we've got four lottery slots.
And it is a convention center, not a civic center.
So maybe we could have options at, at the next, could you bring us options like the numbers on that and see what it?
I'll meet with Sylvia and we'll make, I can tell you what they're paying now, what a forty percent discount.
September tenth is the first.
Tuesday, yes.
Is the first ruling of the budget.
So, so that I'm clear, we're gonna go with the four nine nine four and all of the adjustments that we've put in and the twenty-five to twenty-year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what I'm gonna give you.
Did you wait till this team left the room?
No, I was kidding.
Whoops. That was not intentional.
And so we're at this point just negotiating the in-kind, which is not a, well, it is Bastrop, but. Well, because it has a dominant.
Yeah.
Are there other towns that we could look at to see how they do theirs? That are about our size that work with?
I can tell you, and we've done this when we did the whole rate structure, you're never comparing apples to apples. When we, their facility may be twenty thousand more square feet larger, or they may have a hotel attached, or they may be run by a city department or they may be individually owned. So it's, I kind of think this is a decision we would make.
So the difficult about this is had this gone through the hotel route and we would have privatized this, there would have been no.
Yeah.
In-kind.
Right.
So.
All right.
Tiered percentages and a lottery system, options.
And the percentage, just to be clear, that was gonna be like, uh, forty or fifty, Kevin, for, for local, but then a different rate for, um, other nonprofits?
Oh, right, the out-of-town nonprofits, right, I would expect that we would have some, need to say no on that. And so, how do you determine who's local and who's not? You're gonna start getting, you know, okay, is Cedar Creek not local? Is, okay, well, is, um, is Austin local, you know, I mean?
No.
Yeah. Right, right, I think that's obvious, but there's a line to draw somewhere. And, you know, is Elgin local, is Smithville local? Maybe it's the county, right, exactly. So.
Yeah. It's a city convention center.
Exactly, yeah. Right, so it's all something to think about.
So if your nonprofit's based in the city of Bastrop, it's a forty percent discount?
I, I like to say we're just spitballing here, um.
County is thirty.
Right, and maybe it is county, and, yeah. And maybe there's some determination, do you do work in Bastrop? They could be based in, you know, um, somewhere else.
If you're in the county, you get forty percent. If you're out of the county, you get four thousand dollars.
And if you're in Austin, you get plus thirty.
Okay, well, well, so I'm looking at tiered percentages and a lottery, is that?
We're forecasting, would the tiered percentages be hard?
What? No, it would affect revenue and.
On the plus side.
On the plus side, so it.
Okay.
All right.
Items for individual consideration for a consider an act on authorizing the city manager to negotiate with Bastrop County Historical Society for the storage of building materials and city-owned property from the demolition of the building known as the German Casino. At thirteen oh six, Farm Street, Bastrop, Texas, authorize the city manager to proceed with all matters pertaining to said storage, provided for severability, provided for repeal, provided for effective date, provided for proper notice and meeting, Madam City Manager.
So this is a request by the Bastrop Historical Society. I have Ms. Jill Barrow, uh, in the audience for any questions. So as council is aware, the German Casino, uh, what was known as the German Casino collapsed. It is against the railroad tracks. The owners of the property have committed the bricks to the Bastrop Historical Society. The Historical Society has been cleaning the bricks by hand with volunteers, and the property is just not safe for them to be on. And so they, the Historical Society has entered into an agreement with the property owner for the bricks, and they are going to proceed with the demolition of the property. What they would like from the city is for us to store the bricks and some of the larger pieces of wood until a decision is made on what will become of that German Casino. There's been some discussion with the Historical Society about additional storage that the museum needs, and what would that look like, and where would that look like, and that these bricks could generally create a facade that resembles what the German Casino used to be, a gathering space, et cetera, et cetera, um, that could perhaps fit into our park and rec, uh, idea, but nothing firm has happened right now. They're asking for no financial assistance, but they are asking for the ability to store the bricks. And at this point, really, the only available space is probably the wastewater, uh, treatment plant location. As public works, if I committed public works, Curtis might hurt me, so. Plus, we have a development, uh, going through that area as well, so. Any questions? Um, and the city attorney has requested a, um, no more than five years clause. So they're ready to engage the demolition crew, so.
If we, if, if, if you determine a location, and, uh, and the city attorney's placed a timeline on that storage, I, I, council, what is your, uh, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, Councilmember Meyer, have a second, with Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seem none indicated. Madam Secretary, if you call her, roll. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you call her, roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilman, oh, Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Brothim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously, and that appears to be the end of our active agenda. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. We stand adjourned. Thank you.